Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Let the record show that Commissioner Beverly Barre is not here tonight. And I just want to let everybody know that on item number 11 of the agenda will be the opportunity for people to come up and comment. So, just like in the past, if you want to make a comment, please come forward and fill out a card and you'll have three minutes to speak. And let's just get right into it. This time I'll recognize Ricky Compton, move down in front of me. And you're going to take a couple of minutes with some opening remarks and then defer to Mr. Winston. Ricky?
Thank you. I just want to welcome everybody here tonight and sort of lay the ground rules and talk about what we're doing tonight. Last month, we had a public meeting where the commission received the presentation from the consultant, Mr. Winston and Associates. And we received a number of comments from the public. And what we've done over the last 30 days is boil those comments down to about 10 very specific items. We've created a packet that talks about how the master plan addresses those items, how our existing code and ordinances address those matters. And what we're doing tonight is workshopping with the commission through those items as to how we want them to revise the plan to reflect what their wishes are. We are going to be taking the public comments, as Commissioner Kraus said, at item 11. Hopefully, some of your comments or most of your comments will be addressed at that time that we have taken them into consideration. So, I guess without further ado, Jeff?
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
You don't have a mic?
So, one other item perhaps that would be of interest is Chuck Berger is here from the DEQ. And he had just a little bit of an informational update. And I thought if we could just take two minutes and have Chuck update us, that'll inform our conversation, so.
Chuck, if you don't mind, just come up to the podium here, please, so we can hear you.
What Mr. Winston was talking about was the phased TMDL approach that's going to be in effect for Bayou Manchac. And we're trying to work that out right now. We're actually working on Gray's Creek, but the same scenario will happen in Bayou Manchac. And what it's looking like is in phase one of the TMDL, we will have a 75% reduction, approximately a 75% reduction in phase one. And that is not an arbitrary number. That is a number that's based on what the load reduction would have to be to meet what we think, well, what the proposed criteria, DO criteria is going to be in the future. So, with a 75% reduction, that it calls for facilities that are currently discharged, permitted to discharge at a 30 for BOD 5, will now get a 10 for BOD 5, a 2 for ammonia, and have to have post-aeration to a 5 DO. Facilities that are currently being permitted at a 10 BOD 5 will be reduced to 5 to 5 for those same limits. It does not allow for new dischargers. With a possible, possibly a couple of caveats. One is that the new discharger could demonstrate that they contribute to a considerable load reduction within the watershed, or they can demonstrate that their discharge does not enter the water body.
Okay. Anybody having questions?
Actually, I've got one. Does that, is that taking into consideration any water that's discharged from East Baton Rouge Parish or Hibbertville Parish?
Everything in the Bayou Manchac watershed. We don't address by parish, we address by watershed. So, yes.
Any other question?
I guess when you say watershed, you're not just talking the actual, just Gray's Creek or the Manchac, you're talking about a much larger area, right?
All tributaries leading into it. The watershed is, you know, a drop of water hits there, where does it go? You know?
Do you, do you have an estimate? Personally, I don't know. But do you have an estimate on how much acreage that is, how much land that is, how much area? Any idea?
Not right off the top of my head.
Percentage from Ascension versus East Baton Rouge versus Hibbertville? What percentage do we contribute?
That I could not say. I can tell you that out of 137 dischargers in the watershed, that is permitted dischargers, roughly 94 were from East Baton Rouge Parish and the remainder was from Ascension Parish. That's permitted dischargers. Now, we are doing sweeps in those areas. We've been doing sweeps in watersheds like Chafunkta River and things like that. And we found approximately, you know, we found a number of unpermitted dischargers and we're trying to get them permitted. So, that will occur in Bayou Manchac as well. Now, also too, you've got to remember that we have surveyed Blind River and New River because they are also impaired. And we will do TMDLs on those. We're just not doing them right now because they're not part of the federally mandated consent decree.
What can you, what percentage of Ascension Parish discharges in the effect? You know, what, how much of Ascension Parish discharges into that river?
Into Manchac?
Yes.
As I said, of the permitted dischargers, there was, what, 33 or 34? Yeah. Out of 137.
I guess I was looking more in an area, geographic area.
I don't know the numbers.
Okay.
Is there a map that shows the watershed that's readily available? Not tonight, but I mean, I think that would be helpful for people to be able to see that.
Yeah.
You know, I think one of the questions I've got, if we clean up our act and East Baton Rouge Parish doesn't clean up their act, well, yeah, they've been mandated since the 50s.
Spending $5 billion or whatever, a billion dollars to do it, so.
They are, have a number of projects going on and I don't know what the load reduction is going to be based on all that, you know? It should be, I would expect it to be considerable. It may have a huge impact out on the, a lot of what they're just fixing, as far as I know, existing lines where lines break and let raw sewage into the waterways, you know? Our watershed does include Bayou Manchac, I mean, Bayou Manchac, Ward's Creek, and Bayou Fountain, Muddy Creek, and I think it was Cotton Bayou, I think. So, and yes, Ward's Creek and Bayou Fountain are providing considerable load.
And the no new discharges would be for a time certain, or?
Until it's reassessed and it's meeting criteria. And then at that time, it would probably be the most stringent of limits still. So, it puts it into sort of a special class of water bodies. Because, you know, there's an anti-degradation policy that we have to follow, so we could not allow it to slip back into being impaired.
Is that taking also in other natural events and so forth?
Natural events?
Well, you know, typically we have problems after hurricanes come through and so forth with dissolved oxygen and then...
Those are, I think, outstanding circumstances. What we do is, the water body is sampled and, you know, it's listed as impaired and we model, we model against low flow, what we call critical conditions, high temperature and low flow, because we're modeling for dissolved oxygen. So, we do not model storm events for dissolved oxygen. But a considerable amount of the load does come in during those storm events. And the way we address them in the model is it's a non-point bentic load in the bed, you know, in the sediment. So, it is accounted for that way.
Thanks, Chuck. All right. Thanks, Chuck.
So, fairly significant information. What we thought we would do this evening is, as Ricky mentioned, is work our way through the agenda here. This document has been handed out to you as a resource. It's available for the public as well as a resource. It's, we wouldn't sure how much of it we're going to need to wade through or not, but it's all here for backup information. So, one of the first items on the agenda, the first item on the agenda is the notion of family partitions and...
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Jeff, quick question.
Yeah.
You know, obviously, the purpose of the meeting is to give you guys direction.
Mm-hmm.
How do you, do you want us to handle these directions on a, you know, one item at a time?
Yes.
In that case, I would like to recommend to the commission that maybe after we've deliberated each issue, I guess that we'd make a motion to direct staff to make whatever modifications we feel are necessary?
Down at, on item number 12, direction for staffing consultant, so we consider a motion then if it's...
At the end, or do you want to do it for each one?
Why don't, what about doing it at the end, after we've heard the public comment period? I mean, we can go ahead, what we can do is, we can, as it's presented...
Right.
We can go ahead and we can work up some direction, but after the public comment period, that direction may change a little bit. It'll still be taken down and just make a motion to cover all the direction that's given throughout the meeting. Just one motion at the end of the meeting and it'll be done with that one.
And hopefully, we have taken good note.
Okay. That's fine. I just want to make sure that we...
Okay.
How do you plan?
I don't know. I think at the end of the meeting, we may want to do a motion for each of these items because what if we want some and don't want some? It's going to be hard to encompass everything in one motion.
It would be helpful, it would be helpful to us to get comment on each item, feedback from...
Right. And I think you'll get that.
If we can get some sort of general direction, because we may hear conflicting direction from individuals. So, I don't want to make this tedious.
It's number 11.
Yeah. All right.
Did that help you? I will do each one.
Okay.
Kind of circle back.
Yeah. But we don't want to put off your comments until then.
Right, right. Yeah, yeah, we'll comment.
Yes.
As, as we go through it.
So, we had originally proposed a one unit for two acre rural density. We're going to talk about that density itself a little bit later in this conversation. But there was a number of concerns expressed about how that might affect the family partitions. And fact is that the current zoning regulations allow family partitions, and that's not proposed to be changed, okay, in the comprehensive plan. And the process is spelled out in the current zoning code and we clarified this last time. I just wanted to state that one more time here, that the process of family partitions is not intended to be modified. We did suggest, and I think we heard some comment, that the intent of the family partition is in fact to fight, to enable property owners to create lots for their family members. And that there has been some, some feel that there have been abuses of that system. And so, that we're encouraging that family partition to be used for its original intent. And so, the, I don't know that there's any particular action. Would you add anything to that, Ricky? Brian? Okay. So, you can see on the following pages, a little more, probably more than you wanted to know about family partitions, but it's there. On page nine, again, just reiterating that family partitions are not intended to be used as a back door to create subdivisions without going through the subdivision process other than for family, to benefit family members in the way it was originally intended. And so, the master plan language is on page nine and we think that that's, that's consistent. Any conversations on family partitions from all of you? Issues, concerns?
Well, I guess it, you know, from a plan commission, I know that we've, we've had family partitions show up here and yet when we go out and see the properties, there's for sale signs and we haven't even approved it. So, and I think that's where that, where that fear comes from, is the fact that we have physically seen it. And, but, I mean, nowhere in the plan does it, does it encourage or prohibit family partitions in any way. So, I personally don't, don't see the issue, don't see the problem, you know? I don't know if maybe some of the council members are familiar with it and they see any issue with the language. You know, I hate to put you on the spot since it's only two of you here, but, I mean, from our perspective, that's what we've experienced in family partitions, is that rarely that happens. And certainly, I don't know that we have a solution to the problem. You have to take people in face of what they present when they, when they come here and they say, "I'm going to give this to my son or daughter or nephew or whatever." But it's pretty disheartening when someone's got a for sale sign in front of it and you haven't even approved it. So, but I don't, certainly nowhere in here does it say anything about prohibiting them or to encourage to restrict them in any way.
Well, I think we'll take it to a certain size, then it kicks into other parts of the code, which is what we all want.
But we're controlling that in the code, not in the master plan.
Right. That is correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes, Mr. Valentine?
Since we were invited to participate.
Yes.
I would offer a suggestion, though. I think Mr. Julio and I think Mr. Marshall was hitting on it. I think it'd be wise, you don't have to take my advice, I think it'd be wise to allow the public that want to speak on this specific item to speak. If you wait till the end of the meeting, you're going to lose some of these train, I mean, you guys are trying to decide and you have some ideas in your mind, somebody may come up, wants to talk on this specific issue, that may want to speak on it, that may pique another question. I mean, I don't see anything wrong, I'm reading here that it has nothing to do with family partitions. But, you know, if you want to divide something, you have a substandard road, you got a substandard road. You really, you really shouldn't be able to sell it if you got a substandard road. It should go to family members. So, if there's something that needs to be put into the master plan to make sure that that doesn't happen, as that has done in the past where developers have come in, did family partitions, made concrete roads that were substandard, and then turned around and sold them for lots, you know, sold them for the general public. So, that's just a suggestion. And I know you're all trying to shorten the meeting, but you may find it shorter if you take them after, on each agenda item.
Good comment. Does anybody have a problem? And here again, I don't mind people coming up and talking to the...
I think that's a good idea.
Specific to that topic. We don't want to get off on these tangents sometimes.
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman, it's a good idea. We can stay focused that way.
Yeah.
We don't want this meeting to go on for hours and days and so forth. But perhaps just to merit what's been said here, because a lot of it will get lost in the shuffle if we don't address these issues one at a time. I would agree.
Okay. Everybody in agreement? Okay.
There'll be a time limit on...
Yeah, there'll be a time limit. And here again, a reminder, everybody, don't come up and talk three minutes on this topic and then three, and then take off on a tangent, then come back and the next topic and go back on a different tangent. So, we're going to keep you focused on the topic at hand. And you have three minutes. And I guess Stacy or Ricky went signing cards, they may have multiple signings. So, we just need to monitor that if they come up more than once. Commissioners have any other comments at this time on this topic? Okay.
Just a comment, the public that wants this deal, told that they could speak once, three minutes. We did not, we did not take one item agenda, which we could have, hoping on more than one agenda item. So, now we've changed the rules in the middle and we're going to have, and now we want to do our, our one.
No. I just said that you can come up multiple times if you stay on topic. Like I said, we just, we just want to hear about family partitions. Nothing other than that. So, if somebody has a specific comment about a family partition, please come forward and you'll sign in and just keep on topic. And you have three minutes.
And if I may add, it would be helpful if you could identify specifically what the problem with the language is and, you know, so that we can address the issue, okay?
All right. On family partitions...
Have you signed in?
I have previously. Do you want to sign on here?
We just make sure if you do it more than once, we don't want...
Okay, I do want to speak on other issues.
I understand.
Okay. On family partitions, the document calls for reviewing family partitions, which pushes the process down the road and makes it very much questionable what the outcome of that review is going to be. So, we're not, we don't have the document that tells us what is going to be the final outcome on family partitions, just that it's going to be reviewed. And then when it speaks about, it's actually in multiple sections of the document, but when it speaks about the review process, it holds up criteria of not affecting road creation. And I think that sets up for the destruction of family partitions because if you force family partitions to build roads or to have roads as part of their family partition, then you kill the family partition process. So, I really think that there's, there's the potential in this document that it really just kicks the can down the road and it says, "Okay, after we get this thing approved, then we'll review family partitions. And then we'll say, well, it's in the document that we can't preclude roads, so we're going to require roads with family partitions." And then family partitions are therefore killed. Thank you.
Well, I don't know that we're changing anything that currently exists, would be my interpretation.
Well, it says, it says that it should be reviewed in the future. And that, that gives the potential, and it says road formation needs to be included in that review. And so, that gives the potential for family divisions to be killed.
Which to some extent it is now. I mean, without this document, we still do that.
You don't force road creation, do you?
We have called for a larger dedication, right away.
Servitude.
For more.
But you don't really... Do you, do you require roads for family subdivisions presently?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. The code already requires that.
It's a servitude of passage. They've got to be able to get back to those lots.
Okay. All right. Well, it still does ask for a review process and gives criteria, and so there's still the danger that in that review process, that things could change dramatically as far as how family partitions are done.
I don't think it's changing dramatically at all, but okay.
Is the potential for one.
Mr. Quipman?
Good evening. Just addressed family partitions, there's three items on the family partitions I'd like to discuss. The first one about the family partitions being used as a back door policy, as all of y'all know, on the commission, we have minor divisions. So, there's no need for a back door. That is the purpose of the new regulations being adopted by the planning department. So, there is no back door policy because we have minor division, which is something that we all want, and those are being, going through the strategic planning board. So, actually, there is no back door after minor divisions got accepted or will be accepted in the following months. The second issue is the parish is not able to require adequate servitudes to be reserved for accommodate regional needs. Actually, the statement is false. The public gets free utilities, okay? And the parish gets free drainage servitudes. Free. I'm going to say that one more time. Free. That is actually a taking without compensation. I personally don't agree with it, but it is. Now, if you're going to take free servitude, how about we, the parish accept the utility servitudes, allow the utility companies to put those utilities within those servitudes on the condition that those utilities be removed at the utility company's cost if we're going to go on a widening project on rightaways. That is going to save a ton of money for the parish. But right now, the utility servitudes are given to public companies for free, they put those utilities in them, and then we have to pay to have those utilities removed. So, that may be just an option to look into. The discussion with utility providers for adequate servitude with such as 30 feet may need to be occurred prior to adopting the standard. We already get them for free. Let's not ask for too much. 30 feet encumbrance of servitude is just a great amount to encumber a piece of property. We already get free 12-foot utilities and free drainage servitudes. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Henry Graham, and a couple of the concerns I had regarding family petitions are simply, first of all, the limitation in the number of persons or number of divisions of property for a to five. First of all, suppose you have more than, more heirs than that. In my particular case, I would like to give some land to my sons. I only have three sons. But for them, for building purposes, I would not want them to take the entire tract of land that I give them and put it all under a mortgage. So, for them, I think they would be more flexible if they were able to have two tracts of land each so that they could in the future have that for their children and plan for the future. I don't understand the need for seven lots having a 60-foot wide servitude when the vast majority of the roads in this parish don't have a 60-foot servitude to begin with. So, why would you require it for seven lots? I don't understand the rationale for not allowing a common driveway to a road to only service one additional lot. In many of these family situations, the lots are very long and deep, but may not have a lot of road frontage. Particularly if you're going to take up most of the road frontage with a driveway and utility servitudes and all of these things, you may not be able to put the required, a number of houses along the highway. And so, for the future, you may want to have some additional use of those partitions for your families in the future. In some cases, I think these requirements are actually more restrictive than what you have for subdivisions because you give a lot of allowances for people to pack more houses into a small space. I don't know whether this falls under this family petition side or the, or the rural character, but there was a question, there's a concern about how large or how small the lot can be that you can engage in a family petition. I'm fortunate, I have enough property that I can give as many acres as you would like to consider that as a petition. But many of my neighbors are now passing on to the fourth or fifth generations of their family on their land, and they don't have as much. So, I think you should examine the area and make that determination and not label it that no more than a certain number is allowed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Can I just interject one comment? And that is that we're not changing the family petition regulations by virtue of the comprehensive plan. So, these are all interesting comments and helpful observations, but the fact of the matter is, we're not proposing to change them.
Right.
If we can limit our conversation to that.
My name is Zedford Goto. Ascension Parish was built on family petitions, actually handing down property. And if you go through this parish, as you ride through this parish, you can go in all the different families, all living together. They, they got like on 931 of the Booz Wall, Stranglebridge, the Frederick and the Clue Out. Anywhere you go, that has families that handing down, this is what make the character of Ascension Parish. This is rural. Now, if we come up and I can't leave my property to my children and my grandchildren, what am I do? Somebody got to sell it. So, when I sell it, what's going to happen? Somebody going to buy it and they're going to put 80 houses there instead of six. And I mean, you know, I can see keeping the rural character, that's what I want. But it's, the people, in other words, that's how the parish is built right now. And if you, if you ride through the parish and you can go, it's family after family after family, all over the parish, and they all kin people. And I know, they own my grandpa's place and they own my mama's place. And it's just that, you know, if... And it's just that, you know, if you can't divide your land with your kids, well, what's the use of having land? Yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
In reference to the family partition...
State your name, please.
Excuse me?
State your name, please.
I'm sorry. My name is Ellen Russian. In reference to the family partition in the existing document that we have been provided, there's two specific places that are easily found, 17-2022, 17-2024, that refer to family partition. There's references made other places in the document. I believe I counted with word search two other places. It's very vague in the document, and this is a document that we're gonna consider to be law of our parish. Now, today, this afternoon, I acquired the new document that's 81 pages, and now I've got eight to nine pages explaining family partition. Now, you're saying we're not making changes to it, but now we're made aware of... Is this addition to the plan? Is our 130 pages now 210 pages? Or is, you know, this explanation... Because now the numbers are 17-4026.
I'm not really sure what the point is, but...
Well, the point is, sir, that if you're gonna leave it wide open in a law to review a document...
Okay. Why is this a law? I'm not getting this...
Well, because your own agenda speaks...
It's a blueprint.
Your own agenda, sir, nine, talks about implementation, applicability, and use of comprehensive plan law, okay? All right. So this changes our parish forever, so there is some concern... You know, I love the 81-page document you gave me today because now I can have some more understanding. Now, I haven't had time to review it, to make sense of it, and that's gonna require more time, which I'm certain that y'all are gonna give us since this just came out today. The concern of densities of one unit per two acres, that we mentioned, emphasis on the fact that there seems to be this dominant desire of our present government to cram houses everywhere except family partitions, it's one per two acres. And of course, we don't want that. That is not consistent. This is a avenue that people throughout history have provided for their families. And so we, as a people, need to take some time to step back and to really look at what this plan is saying. Because what is in the original 130 pages does not explain exactly what is written in the new 80-page document. So I appreciate the time that y'all took to do the eight or nine pages, but the public's gonna wanna step back and look at what you've provided, analyze it, and then come back to you with our perspective on what we're doing.
And you'll have that opportunity.
Thank you. Appreciate it, sir.
Okay. All right. Any...
Curious, when looking at the family petition, we're saying that we're not going to go forth with language. I'm looking at the... Here under E where it talks about future subdivision considerations in rural areas, and it talks about five or fewer lots, and it starts spelling out what's needed excluding a family partition. Under one, it talks about the road access, and I think this is part of the confusion that we have here, is that if it's five... Six or more lots, if I understand this right, we're gonna have to build to the parish... We'll build a road to the parish standard. Yet if we take a family petition and we make it four, five, six lots, we don't build it to the parish standard. Is that what I'm reading here?
No.
I think that this would be good to clarify. If we're...
This is something that we've currently been working on in the subdivision ordinance regulations that Mr. Quinlan has spoken of several times. We are revising the subdivision ordinance to say that a minor subdivision is five lots or less, a major subdivision is six lots or more. A family partition is always going to be a minor subdivision. And the language that you're looking at that is confusing was gonna come up in the next section of something that we're gonna revise that basically will read, "Major subdivisions have to meet that criteria. Minor subdivisions do not." But it calls into question the comment that Councilman Valentine brought up. How do we continue to allow people to create minor subdivisions in this parish on substandard roadways and continue to sell them? We don't know. We don't know how to stop that, but as long as lots are being legally created, we're allowing people to sell them and build houses on them. If those are gonna be created through the family partition or the minor subdivision process, so be it. We're capping that at five. We're not saying that people who have families that are larger than five can't do it again and do another five-lot family partition on the same piece of property as long as they meet the criteria that no more than one private servitude crosses any piece of property the private servitude access with, and hard surface rules are being met. But what we're saying is, major subdivisions of six lots or more will build a road. Minor subdivisions and family partitions will not. They will build private servitudes of access, 20-foot of hard surface being gravel or limestone or concrete if they wanna pave it. But that is through the subdivision regulations. That is not through the master plan. But that section you did refer to, we are gonna be tweaking that in the next discussion.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. Moving right along.
Any other comments, commissioners? Okay?
Okay. Rural character. We have heard throughout this process two sides of the argument. We've heard, we want and think that we are a rural parish and that rural is open areas and we don't want homes stuffed in everywhere. And then we have our own definition of rural, which is two units per acre, which is half-acre lots. And the presentation you saw last time we talked was the fact that, to a large degree, the perception of lots has to do with the width of the lot, not the acreage of the lot. So that you can have three acres and five-acre lots that are narrow, that you drive down the road, it still doesn't feel as rural as you would think with having 10-acre lots or five-acre lots. So one of the questions that we've heard and we've had public comment on is, we started out with some intent of trying to preserve certain portions of the parish rural by... And we've got several definitions here at the bottom of page 11. We tried to research what rural means. And so the question before the group here, before the planning commission, is, is half-acre lots rural? And is that the standard by which in many areas, rural, half-acre lots would be considered suburban? So when we say rural, what do we mean? And how do we, in fact, try to define that? We dropped the original suggestion of 10 and five-acre lots being rural, down to two-acre lots being rural, and we're still feeling a lot of conflict about, is it two-acre lots? Is it... Do we just stay with half-acre lots? And when the whole parish is divided into half-acre lots, will we look around and say, "Boy, this is sure a rural parish"? And so that's a question. What does... Do we mean by rural? And what is our vision for the parish? Is it to be, in fact, rural, open, as some of these definitions would suggest, and that there are larger lot areas? And yet, we've got family partitions. We've got the rights and expectations of many property owners who thought that they could divide their property into half-acre lots. And so that... Does that still preserve rural character, particularly if those, again, are narrow half-acre lots? All of a sudden, then, that rural character is further compromised in terms of perception. So as you think about the quality of life in the parish, as you think about what makes the parish unique, part of it is that most people here have talked about, it's rural character. And so we're up against a fairly fundamental decision here about what is rural character and what, if anything, do we intend to do to try and help that become a lasting characteristic of Ascension Parish? Comments?
Yeah. Good question, for sure.
Well, I think a rural character would certainly have a minimum lot size of something on the order of at least an acre, possibly more. The catch-22, as I see it, is we've got somebody who's got five acres and 10 kids or 15 kids. I have a real problem with trying to get my head around this because it's been established in the past pretty much that people can subdivide their land for their kids. That precedent's been set, but there's been no size limitations set. Where this is gonna lead us, I don't know, but it's a concern to me. I mean...
Well, the current... The current partition, family partition, is half-acre. That is the minimum size. Can't go below half-acre lots.
So the catch-22 here is, under the current situation, they could go down to half-acre, which certainly, in my mind, I can't see that as having quote-unquote rural characteristics. I don't know how to address this. I'll be very perfectly frank with you. This is a problem that I think is gonna have to be solved at a much higher level at the parish council or possibly even in the courts. I just don't see a way to address this. I mean, I'm stuck.
Well, and as you said, it's a situation where you've got an individual, you have parents, they have a limited amount of property, and they wanna give their children a head start in life, so they wanna give them a little piece of property. But even with the property owners that have larger tracts, that only have, say, two, three, or four children, they don't wanna cut their... They got 40 acres. They don't wanna cut the whole 40 acres up either. Eventually, the kids would inherit, but they wanna give... They wanna still give their children a chance to head start too. And so that's... The problem that you've brought up has been an ongoing problem. It's... And we've tried to address it in a number of ways. And I think the way it came out was, a half-acre was what everybody felt was comfortable. Well, it was a comfortable number... Or a comfortable quantity to work with. Now, when you get down to rural character, it's not my idea of rural character. My idea of rural character is, I can go into places in this parish, and I can see a farmhouse and 20 acres behind it, and you go 1,000 feet, and there's another farmhouse, and there's 40 acres there. There's cow pasture and woods and more cow pastures. That's my idea of rural character. So I'm kinda... I kinda feel like an acre establishes more rural character than a half-acre. But like I said, that's just my opinion. And if you talk to 20 different people, everybody's gonna give you their definition of what rural character is. And also, it depends on... Not to discriminate, but it's gonna depend on the age of the person. You talk with some of the older people in the parish, their idea of rural character is way different than mine. Because that's what they know. And I don't think it's something that we're gonna... A problem we're gonna answer very quickly either.
Well, I mean, when we began this process, one of the questions was, is it too late? Is it too late to affect and hold on to some of the key things that we think are unique and special about the parish? And you have to acknowledge the fact that in the parish, there are large areas of floodplain that are gonna be a deterrent to development. There are large areas, even larger areas of wetlands that are also gonna have issues in terms of federal requirements. So it's not as if we're about to pave over the parish, okay? But there are also, as we saw last time, part of what makes the parish feel rural is the salt-and-pepper mixture of all kinds of different lot sizes. So it's not... This isn't a parish where you've just got tract housing everywhere. You've got some large lots and small lots, and some of them are just people who haven't gotten around to doing anything with their property. And it's probably not fair to penalize those who haven't done anything yet relative to those who have by coming along now and saying, "Hey, we're gonna restrict." So these are tough problems in terms of... But at the other... On the other hand, it is part of what makes your parish unique. It is really part of what makes Ascension Parish special. And so is there a way we can do this that's fair to the property owners? And I really wanna take this out of the domain of family partitions, okay? The majority of land development in the parish is probably not due to the family partitions. So let's... Let's don't talk about, is it about that? I mean, think about somebody that... Not even the original farmer's 40 acres, but let's talk about some of the larger parcels in the parish and talk about, do we want to do it? Should we try and provide incentives so that people can, in fact, have a little higher density, but overall have a lower density? And there are still some vacant parcels, and they still might end up with a net density of, you know, one unit per two acres, one unit per... Two units per one acre. There are all kinds of ranges in there to try and accomplish that if we think it's fair and if we think it's important to maintain the character, that unique aspect of the character of the parish.
When I first got on the commission, I thought that everybody came to Ascension Parish because they wanted a half-acre lot in their house. And I thought a half-acre was the optimum size. But from sitting up here three years, I can look out and I see what's selling now, and it's not half-acre. What's selling now are the small lots, the townhouses. Affordability is what's causing the sales now. I think that there's a lot of people that would like to have large lots, maybe people with children. But the population is aging, and I don't think that the people that are... Well, everyone's aging, but I don't think that everyone wants to take care of all that. I know I don't want to anymore. To me, the rural character is the trees, the beauty of our land. And I think that... I talked to Ricky recently about some subdivisions, and we were talking about all the subdivisions the lots have to have trees and having more vegetation and just making things more aesthetically pleasing. To me, that's the big oak trees, and that's the appeal. That's the rural appeal to me, is just the trees. Not how much land you have, but the trees and the look.
You know, I think that... I mean, this... What really gives us the flavor of ruralness is as we drive down the road and you don't see narrow lots. You know, you drive down a street where you have very narrow lots, and although they're very deep, you know, there could be five acres, but they're 100 feet wide, you're not gonna get that rural feeling unless you fly over it, right? On the other hand, I don't... I think you can preserve that rural character when you have a mechanism or you're encouraging a mechanism for folks to develop sound developments that contain internalized traffic, for example, and have adequate buffers and are allowed to do certain things internal to that piece of property. I mean, right down the street from where I live, Pelican Point, you drive by, you'd never know, you know, what it looks like inside of it. So you can get the feeling of that it could be rural. It's got a nice buffer along the highway and what have you. And just before you get there, you pass in front of a number of homes that have very wide lots. And those are not one-acre lots by any stretch of imagination. The answer isn't that simple, you know, but I think that the one thing that we have to recognize is that we can't afford to just have a suburban community because there is no... You know, how are we gonna pay for the infrastructures there? How are we gonna pay to sustain all those roads? How are we gonna pay for everything that's needed to sustain that kind of development? So to a certain extent, I think we need to encourage, in the plan at least, in parts of the parish, that rural character be preserved somehow.
Robert? Thoughts? Stephen? Commissioner... I mean, Councilman Lambert.
Yeah. Since I've been on the council, I haven't had any complaints with the two-per-acre, you know? And the places that are rural now, which is on the eastern part of the parish, the Sinamo area, a lot of that land is owned by, you know, owners that have been there for a while, and they're gonna keep it rural because that's the way they want it. But they don't wanna be landlocked where, if they wanna sell... Sanamo area, a lot of that land is owned, owned by, you know, owners that have been there for a while, and they're going to keep it rural, because that's the way they want it. But they don't want to be landlocked where, if they want to sell some property, they're going to have to sell, you know, two acre lots or whatever, give it to their kids, which I know that's family partitions, partitions. But, there we go, we come back to what they call a pud. And these puds have been some nightmares for the council already, just a few that we have put, put in place. So we can go out in the rural area, and I know y'all, this is just a plan. It comes to, back to the council to get implemented on each little item that's there. And it's kind of scary, because at the last council meeting y'all may have watched, a pud got introduced, a lot of changes from what y'all approved got put in it, and it got, and it passed. So that could happen in the rural area. We could go from one house to two acres, to 200 houses in a small, small area, in the rural area, if the council so sees it. So, you know, I don't see any problem with the two per acre. I, I don't want to drop the value of the people's property in that, especially the eastern part of the parish, which is where most of the rural area is.
Okay. I just want to ask, I'm not that I'm calling Councilman Valentine out, but I know, I'm just curious what your interpretation of rural is, because I know you probably were in a very rural part of the parish for a long time, and now all of a sudden, you're surrounded, but...
Yeah, I got a Sonic in my ear. Well, you know, I, I, I kind of agree with, I think it was Julio, talked about, do we want Ascension Parish to become suburbia? And that's what rural character is about. I mean, you, you have some rural character in these, in Ascension Parish that we probably need to maintain as rural character. But then we passed on some pud overlays, where you can put a pud in, right in the middle of vast area of pasture land. Well, that really doesn't seem right, but we passed it. And we have a couple of them in the parish. Not happy about it, but that's where it is. And if this fixes it, well, let's hope it fixes it. But you, you, not only the eastern part of the parish, but, you know, the Dara community, the Srento community, all those communities out there, large tracts, you know, families, I mean, there's a family that moved essentially out of the, the Dutch Town area, out to the river. And they built all up on the road, but they have a large amount of property all behind it. They're going to keep it that way. I mean, they, they're raising cattle, and they're doing what they want to do, as a family. And so, that's what you, when, when I think about rural character, that, that's what I think about. The fact, and Ms. Liman may have said that, you know, what you drive around and what you see is trees and what have you, if we just cut them all down and put puds and spuds and muds, you know, we, we're going to be suburbia, and, and I, I kind of agree with Julio on the fact that, you know, how, how are we going to handle that as far as infrastructure? I don't want to see this parish become like that, you know? I was born and raised on a gravel road, just three houses, you know? Now there's 175, and it's blacktop. So, that era's gone, but still, we have opportunity to preserve something, and I think we should preserve something.
Thank you. And I, I think that, that's, the challenge is, is that. Try and blend the higher density with, with the less density. I think that's what gets you character, you know, all subdivisions from one end of the parish to the other. You have these areas where you have large pasture land, wetlands, and that kind of blend.
In my experience, in my experience, one way to do that is, is to establish incentives, so that you, it's, grant a higher density if people are willing to cluster. That ends up being a little different than everything 10 acre lots, or five acre lots, or truly rural, or 20 acre lots. You end up with clusters of things, but you also end up with open areas. The challenge with incentivizing is that you have to have a base density that's low enough that there's an incentive to cluster. So if you start off with a base density of half acre lots, it's pretty hard to create enough incentive to then achieve much open area. There's always the question about who owns the open area, and how is it maintained, and all of those sorts of things. And, and, you know, and the market, admittedly, the market does play a, a role here. I mean, to the degree that there is a market for three to five to 10 acre lots, people will create three to five to 10 acre lots. We are seeing, nationally and in Louisiana, we are seeing a shift in terms of, a couple of communities we started working in two or three years, four years ago, said, you know, we're just not a large, a small lot kind of place. We're, we, we like large lots here. And, and so we listened to that carefully, and, and two years later, we were getting the same people coming in and saying, gee, you think you could build a few more small lots into the, into the master plan? Because those large lots aren't selling anymore, and it's the small lot. So it, it varies from time to time, it varies from area to area, and the challenge we have is to try and capture what is truly Ascension character, and what's, and then you balance that against some fairness. And generally, some sort of incentive program is, is considered fair, unless you want to figure out a way to purchase open lands. Those sorts of things are done in some areas of the country, but, so the challenge of it before us, and again, it's not an idle issue, though. It's not a, because, think about what the parish looked like 20 years ago, how much it's changed in 20 years. And if you think about, actually, if you remember the air photos, how much the parish has changed in the last seven years? Now, we may be in a, in a slow growth kind of mode here because of the economy, but if and when the economy comes back, it'll come back in a, in a fairly, in a more aggressive way than it is today. And it will have been wise to figure out ahead of time how we want to, how we want to regulate, or encourage, or incentivize, or whatever we want to do to, to the parish. Part of the beauty and uniqueness of this parish is that rural character. And that rural character isn't just the eastern part, isn't just the western part, northern or southern parts, it's really scattered throughout. And, and the only question is, do you want to keep on going? And if you, if you want to keep on the current trajectory, there's a pretty good chance we'll end up with half acre lots pretty much everywhere.
Well, I think Councilman Valentine has pretty much hit the nail squarely on the head, when he made mention of some puds down in the Sanamo area suddenly winding up in the middle of some agricultural land. Now, I hate to play the devil's advocate, but this could not have happened had not the landowner sold the land to somebody who wanted to develop it. And that happened because there was a market for those sized lots. We are a free market society. Now, if you can tell me how that we're going to sit up here and tell somebody they can't sell their land, then you're a much smarter man than I am, because I don't think we can do that. I don't think the parish council can do that. Now, I don't think we can regulate this. We can try, but I don't think it would stand the test of time. However, if you incentivize it perhaps, which I think the parish council would be in a position to do, to provide tax incentives for people to hold, hold large, larger tracts of land together, which could prevail and maintain some of the rural characteristics through tax incentives and things of that nature. This is just quickly off the top of my head. But, you know, we're still a free market society, and this is a free country, and we need to be very careful where we go with this, as far as what, telling people what they can and cannot do with their lot sizes and this kind of thing, because this is not a simple question. This didn't get, well, actually, started getting messed up many years ago, because nobody wanted to address it. And I'm really right there just before saying, the horse has left the barn. I mean, we are right there at the threshold. I wish I had a magic wand, but I don't. I, I'm just sitting here, and I'm very frustrated with this whole concept.
Well, let me, let me ask you a question. I mean, is the question really that, that, that the policy or, or the goal that we've written today, is the issue really that it, it speaks to reducing the density, and, and we're translating that asset takings, as, as a reduction in property values? Because if, if that's the issue, you know, then, then maybe, maybe the approach that we need to take to this is, is more along the lines of, you know, that future development approvals in the area must take into consideration that, that the development will, will, will develop criteria where development, you know, will have to preserve the rural character of the setting that it's in. Take some of the area, some of the rural areas in Sanamo, to the south end of the parish, or something like that. I, I mean, there are large tracts of land there that are going to come in to be developed. Right on 44 and 22, you know, there are developments that, that were done in such a way that do preserve the rural character of, of the, of the parish, but there are, there's at least one that doesn't, clearly doesn't. And maybe we need to steer away from, from, from a policy that specifically says it's going to be X number of acres. Because I'll tell you something else that, that sort of triggered in my mind. You know, we have a rural zoning district, and now we have a rural character, and they're really two separate things. And I've been commingling them off and on, and, and maybe we need to, we need to understand that the goal here isn't about the size of the lot, but about a character that needs to be defined, and that, and that the goal should read, that future developments, you know, should preserve the rural setting that they're in.
Let me just respond to a couple of things that several of you've said. One is the importance of goals. A comprehensive plan is intended to be a visionary document, okay? It starts with a vision, and, and then it builds down to goals, and then it goes down to, to strategies, and then occasionally actions, and to implement it, so that it's not just a pipe dream. So it has to have some direction in it. But, the challenge here is, can we agree on the goal? Can we agree on the vision? Is the vision to preserve some parts of the parish rural? If we can agree on that, we'll find a way to do it, okay? If we can agree that that is, if that's not the goal, if the primary goal is, is, is to, is really to preserve half acre development densities everywhere, that's a different goal. And that'll have a different outcome and a different character, and we'll have a parish that looks different than it would be if we had a different goal. So, if, if we can focus on the goal. Now, it is a free market society with limits. It's not infinitely free, as you and I both know, and probably we wish Wall Street had had a few more regulations or something in the last crash. And part of, part of the issue that you're all struggling with is the PUD, that came along and created a new market, and a new potential that didn't exist before. And people took advantage of that, and, and the market showed that there is a demand for some of those smaller lots, in spite of the fact that a lot of us think that half acre lots are, are the right answer. There is clearly a demand for smaller, and we've learned last time that 70% of the parish population lives on lots less than, I think, less than two thirds of an acre, or less than a half acre, something like that. It's a, it's a large number. And so, we are, 70% of the land is in large lots, but not 70% of the people. The other aspect of this is that, that the lower density, spread out development, costs more to build and costs more to maintain. And to some degree, that's a, that's a market issue. You, you don't like that, you don't buy the house. But for many years, this parish has not been charging the total cost of that, of that obligation. And so we now, as you've read in the document, we now have some massive obligations to catch up with road construction, where we have roads that are not meeting our needs today.
Sorry, that wasn't me.
It's a nice ring, would you? So, the parish is not, as much as we want to allow the right to develop, we're not, we don't have an obligation to serve if it's not going to be cost effective for the parish, if we have to raise everybody's taxes to do that. So, we have to think about that, that we have a huge, and, and those road costs are not because of what's in the master plan, those road costs are there today, because of what's been deferred. So we have some massive issues about density, and, and where that can happen, and, and where development of any kind should happen, because we have to serve it with roads. And, and then on top of that, we have the things that Chuck talked, Chuck talked about in terms of water quality. So, we, we made an initial proposition that we, in fact, established some very low densities, that we provide some incentives for clustering. That ran into a whole lot of comment about, gee, that's taking away development potential. In, in my experience, in lots of areas of the country, that doesn't actually reduce property values. In the, at the end of the day, in, in many cases, it increases property values, but that's, that can be debated. And so, at the, the challenge here is, what's, what's a better way to go forward here than what suggests, and the choices we've given you here are, we stay with very low densities as originally proposed. We backed off and said, hey, about two acre, as a kind of a definition of rural. And then we have some significant comment about half acre is what we've had, what's wrong with that? Let's keep it at half acre, and let's try and divorce this from the family partition discussion, okay? This is in general throughout the parish, do we want to see half acre lot development as a, as a kind of a base density? Or do we want to try and develop some? Let's talk about goals. What's, what's the goal, and what's the objective, and then we'll help you figure out how to get there.
Okay, if, I mean, I, I'm with you, the goal is definitely keep the rural character, and that's, that's something I feel is very important, and we need to accommodate that.
I think we don't want that, because we all have different visions.
Yeah. Well, he'll get us there, he already did. Any other comments, or some public comment? All right. Teresa?
Good evening. Where do you begin when you fear the loss of something precious and irreplaceable? Consistently throughout the growth of Ascension, residents have expressed the desire that rural character is one of the most important aspects to protect and preserve. This wish is reflected throughout the draft of the comprehensive plan we are discussing tonight. The definition of rural is more than open space, or the presence of trees, or the size of piece of property. It's a combination of all of these, plus more. It is what Ascension is all about, pride of family, community, a home with property to share with others, neighbors and friends, part of a celebration of life. It is no mistake that single-family housing has been the dominant residential pattern in the parish as long as we can remember. People have come to Ascension Parish for a quality of life that exists here with the rural character, good schools and the culture of the residents, which shouts, welcome to our community, you are home. You seem to be confusing family partitions, rural character, and as Mr. Dumas said, rural. These are three completely different issues. And, and it's real important that you look at that. Another one of the gentlemen over here, we're talking about the size of property. 37% of all the numbers of property in this parish are under a third of an acre. The second most numerate is one third to one acre. It doesn't, the size of the property doesn't define rural, it's the ownership of it, it's the usefulness of it, it's the sharing of it. I do want to say that I can tell you one thing, it is not, and that's where parish government is encouraging more compact growth, whether it's in centers or whatever, with duplexes, condominiums, apartments, townhomes, and yes, sometimes the single-family dwellings, that's where it is not rural character. It is important, I can see as y'all are up here, that y'all are, you're truly trying to find an answer to this. And, and I really encourage you, and I'm so glad to see this. And the only way you're ever going to solve this is to go into each one of the communities. Each one of our communities are the same, but yet we're all very different. There is room for duplexes and apartments, et cetera, and single family homes. We don't have to have big pieces of property for those that want rural character. And I think it comes back to, again, that, as one of the other commissioners said, she saw that affordability is not a priority. She runs into people all the time. I went through every one of your polls, affordability of homes was never even in the top five in all of the polls. Yes, there are people that want affordability, and they want apartments and stuff. We need to have all of it, but not by destroying the rural character and the, the way of life and the quality of life that we have here, and have had for many years. I think that's it. I'm sorry, I was sort of trying to come down, I'm playing by y'all's rules, but I would encourage you to, again, have public hearings. And when you come into our area, we'll let you know the kind, what we need, what rural character means to us, the kind of development we want, and maybe you can help us, and we can help you take care of everyone's needs.
Thank you, very well said. And I think, Ricky, I don't know if you want to elaborate on that, to, to the point where we are going to take a couple of meetings to, to the community, so that is our intention.
Good evening.
Hi.
I'm Catherine Guppelt. Just a few comments. I do want to reiterate what Teresa said and Julio said, because it's very important, and I don't think everyone heard what was said. If you look on the master, or this plan that you're proposing, page sixteen of a hundred and thirty pages, has a table. This table shows us what our current zoning categories are, and what the new categories will be, and the difference, it doesn't say too much about the difference of densities, but that's in the document, okay? We're being told that the comprehensive master plan is a policy document, but in this paperwork we were given tonight, this is what it says in the very first line of the facts. It is very important to finalize the densities. That's not policy. That's a very detail. You are assuming in your conversation, when you were discussing, that all property owners in a zone, a land that's zoned rural, will, will automatically go to the minimum amount of land that they can divide their property in. I'm in a rural character, rural zone, okay? I'm getting confused. I'm in an area that's zoned rural. Currently, I can use, or I can put two homes on one acre, okay? In your plan, I will have to have two acres to build one house. Mr. Quipmar mentioned in the last meeting, as a surveyor, when you go to get the plat, get all, everything in order, to get the approval of the, of the parish with all the rite of ways that you're going to require, and the servitudes, in order to build a house on two acres, you will need four acres. I only have five acres, and I have four children, so I'm stuck, like Mr. Dalton. A category of zoning as rural is not the same as the character of the parish that we're talking about. You are going to change zoning with this document. You tell us you're not with your words, but the black and white words on the paper are different. It's not the same, and you're, we're not confused, we're looking at the document, we're listening to you. We don't know which one to believe. We need to be consistent with our words according to what's in the document. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, come on. Have you pulled out a card? Do you have a card filled out? Okay.
My name's Ernest Wayne Floyd. Uh, I came in here tonight to speak, primarily I watch it on television because I've had some health problems. But when you talk about rural character, we subdivided approximately eighty acres years ago. And in our, when we subdivided, we broke it into acre and a half lots, four acre, eight acre, acre and a half, minimal lots. By doing this, uh, we really don't take away from the rural character of the, the property. But I believe on, in today, with the advances that we have in our systems, our sewer systems and things like this, we could probably go to the one acre, one house per one acre, would preserve your rural character. But if you start, uh, I'm going to use like, say, M.P. Evans's lands, he's passed away, that's what, four hundred and fifty, five hundred acres in there. All right. Under this plan that I see that has been put forward, there is a possibility that this land could be sold, and that this particular, uh, plan that you have here, this thing could end up, you might have as high as fifteen or fourteen units on an acre. Personally, I think that what we should move forward in this parish zone right now is try to build the sewer systems, the water systems, the road systems. This will bring us forward to be able to use a program like we've got here. What we're doing with this unit that we've got here, we're putting the cart way ahead of the horse, so to speak, in rural country. What we need to do is place the heart, hearts up front, and, you know, guide the horse. We need to build, the first thing we need to build in this parish right now is our connective sewer sanitation system, water system. I married a young lady from, well, she, we're all old now, but anyhow, even though Assumption Parish has water throughout, basically throughout the parish, and they only have like twenty-five thousand people in the parish, but yet they had the foresight, which A.J. Lusto and I worked on this thing back in nineteen seventy-two, we started this. At that time, the federal government would advance to parish a tremendous amount of cost. I don't remember exactly what it was, it was over the seventy percent ratio of cost for you to build your systems. Ascension Parish couldn't get together then because we had two separate parishes in one parish. We had the West Side Parish, and we had the East Side Parish, okay? West Side Parish virtually got together and got a lot of this money.
Time's up.
Time's up? Well, I have a program, in other words, here's a deal, they just went for, the commission is putting three houses on two acres.
Okay, well, that's kind of off the.
Lot sizes, twenty-nine thousand square feet.
Thank you.
I'm signed up. I'm John Peterson. I thought you might like to hear from an outsider. I'm from Florida originally, came here in nineteen seventy. I've been an employee of one of the companies here in Ascension for forty years. It's an unusual thing to stay with one company that long, but I love this place. I've been a taxpayer for thirty-seven years, and I've been a resident for sixteen years. Teresa Robear, I think, solved the problem for me. I've been listening to this, this, trying to get our hands around the concept of rural, and I always thought, well, that's, that's what I'm looking for, rural. It's not. I come from a place in Florida where I'm used to ten thousand acre orange groves, thirty thousand acre cattle ranches. There's nothing like that around here. We have a place on the turnpike, you can't even find an exit for fifty-seven miles. That's rural. This is not rural, but there is something about this place, and it's why I bought land here, that's why I moved here. Fortunately, I've got a, a nice-sized piece of land, I live across the road from a single family. I've lived next to four generations of that family. I, I know them very well. I know who comes down my road. All around me are family partitions, fortunately, I'm, I'm fortunate. I know all my neighbors. When I lived in Baton Rouge, I rarely got to know a neighbor. A very transient population. This population is not transient. You know, there's a lot of very strong family people here. It's what brought me here. I love it. And I would hate to see the character of the land change so that suddenly I live next to a very high-density area where people are coming and going, and I don't know who in the world they are, and they don't know me either. I don't have a solution for you, but I, I can say that as far as I understand the current proposal, I am opposed to it. And I think we have some zoning in place that just was promulgated a few years ago, what, two, three years ago? We haven't had, had a chance to even see it work because of the economy. Why not let it work? Why not, let's take an increment of time and let what we've done work, and approach this whole problem on an incremental basis, and I'll say this, if anything like this ever happens, it better come before the people in a referendum, or we're going to have insurrection. I'll tell you, I, I love privacy, and I love independence. It's America. We are independent, and we love our privacy, huh? So, let us have a, let us have a say. Thank you.
I do want to say that a lot of the sentiment that's echoed here tonight, I understand and I agree with much of it, but I do disagree in that the plan is going to destroy any of this. I think if we approach this with some common sense, we'll see that the plan will help people to maintain that rural character in these areas, and keep that gigantic subdivision or some, you know, industry to pop up right next to them, or something undesirable. The plan is what's going to give them more of a leg to keep these things away from them that they don't want. Because, yes, everybody wants their rights and wants to do everything they want to do with their own property, but as soon as someone puts something next to them they don't like, they're going to come hollering at you. And then you're going to say, we don't have anything in place to prevent this. And I think the plan is a good guide for us to look back to when we're making these decisions. And I think the big misunderstanding is that the plan is not law, the plan is a guide so that when we're making decisions, we can go back and look at it, refer to it, and then make our own decisions. You would be making your own decisions based off of that. So please do not kill this plan, it is a good concept that we will continue to work on, and I think it's a good direction for our parish, because our parish, if we don't do the right thing, we will look like Baton Rouge, we will look like Metairie, because the subdivisions will keep coming in, the developers will keep buying up the property, and the pie is only so big, especially with family partitions. You have twenty acres, you subdivide it, or not really subdivide it, you, you give it to your, your kids. Their kids get it to their kids, and their kids give it to their kids. Eventually, you're going to run out of land, and you're not going to be able to family partition it anymore, and you've got substandard roads. I am not against family partitions, I'm just saying the fourth, just to look ahead and see what it is going to look like in twenty years. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Anne.
My name is Ellen Russian. I think we cannot deny that our character is established by the size of lots. We're now presently rural. Early two thousand, a lot of us fought to keep the numbers down because we were trying to hold on to our rural character, and what it is now compared to what it is in nineteen ninety-four is just a whole new world. And a lot of us fought just to keep it at the numbers we have now. Presently, we are zoned ninety to ninety-five percent of the parish, three, two, and one units per acre. The problem with the plan is it is primarily a focus on urbanization, which increases our density to fifteen units per lot in places. It allows for it, it opens the door for the high density, and that is what the people are opposed to. To me, it's like putting a pig in a flower garden. You cannot maintain our rural character as a community by urbanizing us, just doesn't work, doesn't go together. The plan pushes primarily control of government, government over our community, taking it away from the people. The cost-effectiveness, you speak of raising taxes, if we don't do it a certain way, we may have to raise taxes, but the plan throughout, tools that it uses are to raise taxes, to go in and reevaluate the property, to get more money. Everything in this plan is going to cost more money. There's constant references to developing new programs, that things that are going to have to be created, bigger government, that is what we're seeing. At least, if the taxes are going to be raised, the people should be able to have what they want. Mr. Winston said that building with rural character and maintaining it will cost more for the citizens. I believe that they will be willing to pay more if they support the plan. We hope that you feel that the community's support is important. If you get the community's support, we will do whatever is needed to make the plan successful. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, let's stay on the topic of rural.
I'm on it.
Good.
When I speak of rural, I'm talking strictly about zoning, or rural zone. That's what I consider to be what we classify as rural. I've actually solved the problem. I'll be happy to hear. And I did want to tell you, Todd, they got some people in your district that are concerned about the two acres, because it has to have four acres to even subdivide your property in a minute, in a minor division or a simple division. So there are other people, I just don't think the majority of people know that these regulations are out there, what we're talking about implementing. But the solution, option number one, do not regulate density in rural areas, rely on existing zoning criteria, regulations to manage how the areas get developed. The only thing missing is we have to add two items. We need to add that the parish send out certified letters to property owners whose zoning is subject to change, and that public meetings be held before devaluating or increasing the value of property owners in certain areas. And also, we need to hold special elections, or add items to the election for the people in those areas to determine what they want. If Santa Monica wants two acres, and they vote that they, they want two acres in their district, then we should give it to them. But we should let, we should hear from the people what they want in their areas, and not just us as professionals or commissions dictate to them what they should be. We should actually have the people speak up and tell us what they want.
Hello, I'm Craig Russian again. Density is the core issue, absolutely the core issue. Ascension Parish is presently zoned three, two, and one units per acre, with a little bit of eight units per acre along three major roads. Basically, that's it, three, two, one. That is actually a good plan. I think that the citizens of this parish support three, two, one. I support three, two, one. You know, Santa Monica's got a nice half-acre lots, I would like to see a little more, two in north-central Ascension Parish, but I very much support the three, two, one density that we presently have. This plan, you know, it has two sections. It's got what they call rural, and it's got urban. And they want to super-urbanize north-central Ascension Parish, and they want to do what they call rural outside of their septic system area, their unified septic system. So, I want to digress for a second. This document is liberal, it is socialist, it is a collectivist document from the west coast.
Okay, we don't, that's.
No, I, no, that's very germane, because, so what this writes, this is about rural. So what they do is they make an area they super-high density, which is the urban area, and then the rest of the area, they make it where you cannot develop your property. And that's where we get into the definition of rural. So in rural, they're going to put lot-size requirements, no runoff septic requirements, no, no floodplain affecting requirements, and some others. And they're going to make it where people cannot develop their property. And so what we're going to have is super-urbanizing in a section, and you can't develop your property in other sections, and we don't want that. We want to be able, the three, two, one is fine, I don't think, you, you want to define rural as something that has a super-large lot requirements and all these other restrictions. So then we have the, the two-zoned area, we have the cannot develop, and the ten to fifteen units per acre can develop. And that is what collectivists want. Really, it's a system you can see on the west coast, it's urbanize an area and hold. You hold the rest of the county or parish where people cannot develop it by having excessive restrictions, and then you urbanize the rest. And that's why we get into this definition of rural, because we already have three, two, one, and we're fine on rural. But there's a push to define rural as extremely large lots whereby the development.
Okay, it's time.
All right, the development of outside areas is almost impossible. Right, the development of outside areas is almost impossible.
Hi, my name's Casey Dufour, and I was, Councilman Valentine alluded to the PUD earlier, and unfortunately for myself, I was very affected by the one that was just recently passed, and maybe the minority, I live on a half-acre lot. And I agree, Mr. Dalton, with what you said about, we can't take a landowner who wants to sell his property for development, tell him, "No, you can't do that." But I also agree with what Mr. Dumas said, in that we need to make sure that what we're putting there remains consistent with what's already there. If you take a drive down Highway 933 where I live, you'll pass some cow pastures, some nice open land, a big pond in front of my councilman's house, who is not here tonight, and then you get to the nearly 1,000-home subdivision PUD that was just passed. It's gonna have nearly 400 garden homes, and it doesn't fit. I just, my hope is that through all this, I hope that we can maintain the rural areas that we have, but we've gotta remain consistent. Because when that subdivision started, it was, it was, you know, we were following the current zoning, and then as it went, it kept getting smaller lots, more homes, smaller lots, more homes. I hope we can do like Mr. Dumas said as we go through this, and where we do put this, let's make sure it fits with where we're putting this stuff. Thanks.
My name is Al Robert. I see a huge problem, and I appreciate everyone's work and effort that y'all put into this, but it's for naught, it's really for naught. I watch these meetings a lot on TV, and y'all really try to do the right thing. But what Councilman Valentine said hits the nail on the head. We had Orange Grove and Sorento, we had public hearings, everybody approved the subdivision, the purchaser paid the property, the landowner was asking for the amount, everything was fine, and then nobody knows, but it's turned into a screwed-up development. The same thing's happened to, well, it's been, it's happened right there, where they turned it down, then they go and they get the property taken into the City of Gonzales, and they bypassed all of the regulations. So unless you can do something to make the parish council honor your decisions, we're just spinning, spinning our wheels, we're doing nothing. Something needs to be done.
All right, thank you.
My name's Henry Graham, I just wanna make a few comments. Number one, you're not gonna have a rural character in the parish if you're encouraging high urban density. They don't mix. If you have anything more than four per acre, you're not gonna have rural character eventually. You can't create a system of have and have-nots, as some of these people have alluded. What you should be doing is if you want to have a little more intense development in the north end of the parish, then you better put the infrastructure in. And if they don't, then they don't get to develop. If they wanna squeeze all the houses into a little corner so that people don't have a yard, all right, give us the rest of the land for a park, for the roads, for the water quality retention ponds, and for all the other things that they're going to be impacting by squeezing everybody together. I'm down on the lower end of the parish, but I certainly don't appreciate the fact that you're gonna pack in 10 or 12 houses to an acre up in Prairieville and send all that water roaring down on me, on my 60 acres, and then say, "I can't do anything with mine" because now I've become the flood recipient for what you've decided to let other people get by with. I don't think anyone who's, who's sitting up in Prairieville who wants to still stay a little bit rural would appreciate you allowing people to pack a bunch of houses in there, move the traffic over there, and create the, create the kind of problems that they have there. So if you're really interested in rural character, you've really gotta stop all this PUD, mud, and all these other packed use, mixed-use development. If they want that, let them take it to East Baton Rouge. You know, at least over there, when you try to propose one of those, they make you put roads and drainage and extra things in. And they actually have a $1.2 billion plan right now for their wastewater system to catch up. Where, when are we gonna catch up with our infrastructure? We're never gonna catch up if we keep allowing people to pack things in before we can even take care of what we have. Thank you.
All good points, and that's what we're trying to solve. I mean, it's, every one of your points is part of this plan. Okay, I think we've heard enough. Any commissioner, any more questions on this topic? And move on to the, to the next one.
Just two last thoughts. One is a key part of this plan, a key recommendation of the plan is in fact to have a Phase Two, which is sub-area planning. A number of people said, "One size doesn't fit all, let's, Santa Ma may not be the same as Prairieville," and we couldn't agree more. A comprehensive plan has to start somewhere, so the plan starts with trying to capture a general vision. We think we've identified the fact that the characteristic of the parish is the diversity of the parish, and that it is made up of sub-areas, and so one of the key recommendations we hope could be implemented sooner than later frankly, is the idea of working with individual communities within the parish and developing a plan that's more custom-fit to them, and then coming back and modifying the comprehensive plan to reflect that, so that it's not necessarily a top-down imposition, but it's trying to start at a big picture and then work our way down to detail and work our way back up to modify the big plan. And the other comment I heard was that, you know, the PUD is a problem. The PUD, because it introduces density, so it's clear that there is a threshold at which things, certain densities aren't not acceptable, so we just now need to narrow the gap down to figure out what those, what those lines are. The next topic is interconnectivity. And we're on page, what here?
Here in the master plan.
Oh, wrong document, no wonder I can't find it. So, interconnectivity, page 23. We've heard both sides. We've heard we need to have more interconnectivity, it makes no sense. We heard a lot of the service providers, fire department, school district, others talk about the long distances it takes to go from one cul-de-sac around to the next cul-de-sac. The plan is not suggesting that those existing developments be modified in any way, we're talking about new development. More than anything else perhaps, the plan is suggesting that we maintain the current ordinance, that does require some level of connectivity. What the plan is really talking about in terms of general circulation and terms of connectivity, isn't going back and retrofitting existing neighborhoods. It really is identifying the fact that there are a couple of key missing links in the parish, major roads and major parallel roads, that would greatly enhance, we have, we have a choice before us, we have the choice of, of really widening a couple of roads in the parish and, and making them decidedly unrural, or we can have smaller increments to a number of other roads that connect the missing links. And, and we understand that if we were to do that, that we'd have to go by the right of way. We're not condemning anybody's property, we're not running these roads through somebody's backyard, but they need to be done, they're already in the works, they're already identified, they need to be done to meet today's standards. We have a number of roads in this parish that are not wide enough to meet current standards, that are not safe. And so the master plan and the comprehensive plan is trying to reflect that, and identify that, that we need to have the ability to have more than one way to get around. As long as we continue to funnel all the traffic on one or two major roadways going in, in key directions, then we'll only have ongoing congestion, it'll only get worse as, as these half-acre lots or whatever development happens. So that's kinda the direction on, on connectivity. Would you add anything to that, Ricky? Comments?
Well, connectivity, between subdivisions, that can be beneficial to fire, rescue, school buses, things of that nature when they're developed, if they're tied together. It also helps in the times of natural disasters, if a tree falls over on one intersection, there's another way to get around it. If you only have one street in and out of a given subdivision that happens, as did happen in my subdivision during one of the hurricanes, we, the residents, had to get out there, they chainsawed and started becoming woodcutters. Having said that, there's a couple of natural constraints that we have here that we're just forced to live with. Our northerly corridor is mainly Interstate 10 and Airline Highway, period, because of such natural boundaries as Bayou Manchak, there's just not other roads over there going up towards Interstate 12. You've got where 42 jumps over the river there at Fred's and all that. Going south, you've got swampland towards Santa Ma, which limits the number of roads. Going towards New Orleans, you've got Airline and Interstate 10. And then of course, going across Donaldsville, you've got the river to contend with. So like it or not, we have a couple of real serious boundaries we have to contend with. Rural roads are generally considered farm roads, but our rural roads carry a tremendous amount of traffic, especially there over by Berthlot, where the bridge goes across, we have a lot of people coming across from Livingston Parish and whatnot to go to work over by the river. I mean, if you don't believe it, look at the traffic that goes through there every day. In the morning, it's a mad rush coming this way, and in the evening, it's a mad rush going back. The same thing with Airline Highway and Interstate 10. Ascension Parish in one respect is a bedroom community to Ascension, to East Baton Rouge Parish, and is going to be, because we don't have what industry there is. I mean, most of that industry's up there, or the businesses are up there, plus we've got industries along the river. We need better roads, we all know that. Where's the money gonna come from? It's not gonna come out of this plan, but we do need to try to have a master plan to develop our roads to facilitate the flow as best we can with what restraints we have facing us. I mean, it's just the facts of life. So, that ends my little speech.
I think we all agree that the roads are a serious problem.
I think that the whole concept of.
So we're on the right track or not? Yeah, on the right track.
I think the whole, the whole subject of connectivity is, it's a very personal issue, which is probably why it's, it's become a hot button with so many people. Those of us that live on a dead-end street with a few houses don't see the need to connect. Those of us who live in a large subdivision with one way in and one way out clearly wish we had a second way in and a second way out. And then there's of course, you know, how do you connect an all subdivision with, with the adjacent subdivision when there is no reserved connection? I know that there's somebody in the audience that can clearly answer this question, because my subdivision where I live in is quite old, although homes weren't built there a long time ago. And, and yet it has reserved right-of-ways for connecting to an adjacent property, should that ever be developed. So it's an issue that's been addressed by the planning commission for many, 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 many years, and, you know, I think the answer is, is that, the other flip side of that question is, is that, are we prepared to also pay for the consequences of not having that interconnectivity, how it affects our fire rating, which affects our insurance, you know, the cost of our home loss insurance, and our liability insurance, and all those other things? You know, and that's, that's another factor that people don't understand. And that's not, and that's not a dollar that those two guys and their rest of the council can, can control, that's something that's done by an independent bunch of people who look at the parish and say, "Oh, look at all the dead-end street, and, oh, lack of fire hydrants, and lack of this, and lack of that," and goes, hmm, fire rating goes up. And that's how you, how they calculate your insurance premium, and how much it costs you to have insurance at your home. And I, you know, there's a consequence to all of us for that, and I think we need to take into consideration that it does hurt our pocketbook, and it's controlled by somebody external to the, to the parish.
But you understand, because you almost had a subdivision go in behind you, you understand that if, if that subdivision went in, they would tie into your subdivision, right? It's in the ordinance now that we should encourage interconnectivity. It's in the ordinance, and we do it whenever possible.
Right, and, and all the policy does is encourage, reinforce that, same language, the encouragement, not an absolute requirement, you know, and I'm particularly, you know, I know it's a hot button, I mean Keystone was a classic case, you know, you, you know, and I hate to bring up something, but that's very true to the, to the topic. You know, here's the PUD, we looked at it, we realized that putting that much traffic on 18-foot road pavements and what have you was gonna be a problem. And, and yes, there are, there was an adjacent development, and they raised very valid concerns about, hey, how's that gonna affect my local streets? You know, that's traffic that's gonna go in front of my home. And, and yes, that's a tough decision to make.
Your local street, which is a public street, it is maintained by the, by the parish.
Correct.
It's a public street.
The main question is, when do we reach the happy balance, a happy medium? Because for a long time, this commission was approving single-street subdivisions. That's what was coming to us because of the shape of the property. One street in, one street out, that was it. And we were heavily criticized because we were not connecting them to other subdivisions by a number of different people. So, when we, when we require connectivity, we're criticized, when we don't require, we're criticized. So where's the, I'm, I'm kinda tired of this juggling act, 'cause that's what it is. When do we actually get some credit for doing, doing something right with this? I understand, you, you, you've moved into your subdivision, and you know the neighbors there, and somebody comes with a new development next to you, and I don't know who these people are. Well, better safe than sorry, we don't want this, we don't want to connect into us, we, we don't need it. But at the same time, I also have to look at the safety issues, fire, emergency, you have to look at, what happens if a hurricane hits us and a tree falls across the street? I may be the only one in the subdivision with a chainsaw. My neighbors may not have one, because we don't, we don't have a bunch of trees that we need a chainsaw for. So, somebody tell me, when, when is, when do we hit that, that perfect arrangement where we satisfied everybody as far as connecting and not connecting?
Well, I, I view it as a, as public safety. I mean, I was in a subdivision previous to the one I'm in now where we had only one way to get in and out. There was a gas leak at the front of the subdivision, no way to get out. So I, I think it's a public safety issue, and I, as a council person, commissioner, would wanna have as much teeth to my decisions to, to require or encourage multiple entrances where, where at all possible. And if, if this is gonna help us in that regard, then I'm definitely for this portion of the recommendation.
So are you saying, encourage it case-by-case basis, where we, where we do have substantiation to require more and go with that?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Crowe. It comes back to the, to the same thing I said earlier, but, you know, y'all setting the policy and it coming, coming back to the council. If the council don't listen to the people of the area and make that decision on what the people want, it's, it's void and none, you know, 'cause it's, just like Keystone went in. Y'all. Y'all all approved the third connectivity, and being they got kicked out, well, now we only got two connectivities with 2,000 cars. Now, what, a lot of them cars are going to go through that 18-foot road, which at that intersection of Deval and Joy Severo, we're going to have some fatalities right there. So we're going to have 1,000 more cars hitting that dangerous intersection. So, you know, it was, a couple of us voted against that put, and it was myself and George, and, uh, the rest of the council went with it. And I think if y'all didn't have that, if y'all had connectivity, y'all knew it wasn't going to be there, y'all wouldn't have voted on it, if I'm not mistaken. I watched y'all meeting, and that was a hot issue, that third connectivity on that major road with 200 more houses. It was 944 houses, and most of them being garden homes, like 400 of them are so small, low-income homes, which a lot of traffic. So, you know, there again, it's a policy y'all setting, but it has to come to the council, but the council has to listen to other people. And that's, that's who put us where we at. And I think y'all need to do so also. Thank you.
Okay, we'll have some public comment on transportation connectivity.
I know I get up here and a little bit of negative. I just want to say, um, interconnectivity is the true essence of planning. This is the only part I really agree with. This is, this is the true essence. It's in the regulations, it hasn't been followed, and, and it, it needs to be. It's, it's a tough, it's a tough situation when you have to tell an older subdivision that has a connecting street that you have to connect to a newer development. The circumstance is, that's why it was put there. You do have a thankless job. You will not get thanked either way. It is, it's going to have its pros and its cons, it's just, it just is what it is. But it is the true essence of planning, that is the purpose of, of that connectivity. And, and I do, I do support it. It's important, it's important not to have school buses have to come into a subdivision, turn around, go back out, go down 200, 300 more feet, go back in, come back out, and, and it's, it's a safety hazard. I wish, I wish that it would have been followed in the past to a greater extent, and I, I'm in support of it. Thank you.
My name is Dwayne O'Quinn, I live out in Prairieville. Do you really think the traffic congestion will be eliminated by interconnecting smaller subdivision roads when all the traffic is going to end up the same roadways that currently are a nightmare? It is not going to happen. In the process, we are giving up our quiet neighborhoods where our children can play to become a throughway that will delay the entrance of vehicles into the major parish roadways by a few minutes. The cost of widening and overlaying the roads is less than building new ones. How about some traffic lights and turning lanes on major roadways? Working on widening the roads, not just Highway 42 and 44. Plans for these projects have been on the books for years, but are left unfunded. We really need to get them roads widened, because the traffic is terrible, 42 and 44 certain times of the day. It seems that it is always the people who must bear the brunt of the failed policies of the government, whether it be local, state, or federal, and pay for their mistakes. Your ideas of interconnectivity just will not work if you don't first make existing roadway improvements. The plan is 20 or 30 years down the road. It is just going to happen anytime soon because there's no money there. We really need to fix those roads. Those roads are just, oof. Interconnecting dead-end roads is an infringement of personal property rights and is making massive random traffics through our neighborhoods versus having dead-end roads that connect to major roads, which is how rural communities operate. People do not want to have other people trying to cut through their neighborhoods for their mobility. You have a wreck, or you have people trying to get around the traffic, they coming through those roads, I mean, they flying, they not stopping at stop signs, I mean, somebody could get hurt, killed, I mean, just kids, you know, playing. Where we live now, we have three incoming subdivisions, which are Jefferson-Crawson, Rinwood, and Willow Lake subdivision. Yes, it is much more convenient to travel through these connecting subdivisions to bypass a used portion of Highway 42, but at what expense? Since the connectivity is more congested with traffic, people speeding and not yielding to the stop signs, it was becoming more of a danger for the children and others to ride their bikes or walk to their friend's house a few houses down the street. It is less safe for people who walk and those who choose to stroll their infants. If you, if you were to take a poll, most of the residents in our subdivisions, they would inform you that how unhappy they are, many of them having contacted the parish complaining of the connectivity. In summary, property owners did not invest in property one day to compromise the safety of their families and to forfeit their privacy. The major of, the majority of people in Ascension Parish strongly oppose interconnectivity.
All right, thank you. Thank you. No one else?
Good evening. My name is Margaret Lee, and I have a transportation map from the, um, from the plan, the master plan. And I want to show you my area of the inconnectivity that they have proposed here. Highway 73, Airline Highway, Highway 621. Interconnectivity right here will run through subdivisions through Highway 73, across to Yidda Plessus Road, right through our subdivision. Just wanted to show you a little bit of what they have here for connectivity. If you want to look at their transportation map, it gives you an idea of where they want to propose to connect some locations. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, Craig Rushen, I think that the diagram just shown us shows a lot. It's, it's not just a, maybe you have a single way in, and now you want to make it two. You're really looking more at a grid pattern, and the citizens of Ascension Parish do not want a grid pattern-type interconnectivity. We much prefer our private, um, roads, and to have a grid pattern where people are going to try to bypass the major roads for a little distance and cut through neighborhoods is a safety hazard, much more of a safety hazard than the potential that you're going to have a gas leak on the way out, and nobody can get out of the neighborhood. It's certainly, you know, you're going to have random traffic in neighborhoods. That is, is of course a safety hazard for kids. You're going to have the ability to case houses much more easily by a criminal element, because if they got to drive into a dead-end street, they're much more obvious than when you have a lot of random traffic in a neighborhood. I think for safety issues, random traffic is much more of a detriment than a positive. And for privacy issues, it is highly co, uh, highly desired by the, by the people of Ascension Parish. We do not want a grid pattern. I think what you read in the document is that every new subdivision has to be interconnected, and there's not really a definition of how much interconnected that is. The diagram we just saw shows much more of a grid pattern, much more like Metairie, and, and we don't want a Metairie-type grid pattern at all. I'd much rather leave it to individual neighborhood situations as they're approved, what type of connectivity, instead of having a absolute requirement for connectivity of all new neighborhoods with statements also about interconnecting existing neighborhoods. Again, it goes back to this being a collectivist document, and collectivists don't like privacy. And you will notice throughout this document that attacking privacy is, is kind of inherent.
Just a case in point, my neighbor lives on, behind me, one road in, one road out. Last house on the end of the street, been there one month, got robbed. So there's all kinds of theories behind what, way people do stuff. Yes?
Hi. Yeah, I've got another decision to make, and it's going to be balance, and, and that's what we, we expect of you, and that's what we appreciate from you. And, and this is throughout, and there's so many pages in this plan, and it's in several places, but the way this reads is, "Network connectivity shall be required of all new land development and redevelopment, and encourage blah, blah, blah." I don't think people have a problem with interconnectivity, and as we said already in your regulations, you require stubouts. And if you've done what your other plan has told you to do, those stubouts should be there, and maybe they haven't been done all the time. But this is where it takes a real common sense approach. You're right, we don't want interconnectivity all over in every subdivision, because as Mr. Winston said earlier, we only travel three or four main roads in this parish. We have I-10, we have the Airline Highway, 42 and 44. I mean, all of these subdivisions, and all these homes, and all these developments everywhere, they may be going in and out everywhere, but they all come out on your main infrastructure, and that's another problem that you're going to have to solve. So again, we realize y'all do need the interconnectivity. I would just ask you somehow, and I don't know how it could be done, maybe strongly considered or strongly decided, but that is the key word right there. If you require of, of the development, new development, and the redevelopment, then you're requiring something that may or may not be needed. And if the need is there, that, that is y'all's decision, and you can make that decision with all of the information. Thank you.
Okay, I don't, do we want to take a break, or just?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
In view of the hour, and obviously this is-
Two hours?
-going to be a long thing, I think we should consider some point where we're going to break this meeting and pick it up another day, because it's now 10 minutes after eight. And I personally think about two, two and a half hours is, I'm sure people are getting tired, they want to go home, and we can pick this up another day. We're not going to finish this tonight, obviously.
I don't know legally if we, we advertise to cover it, can we? What's, I don't have a lawyer here, unfortunately.
Every break is a 30-day break, essentially.
Well, I don't find this as working myself. I find that we should have, first of all, we came, we were not supposed to have a public hearing. Second of all, the way we changed it, now people are speaking more than three minutes because they're speaking on every topic.
It was the wish of the commission.
And I'm not hearing anything that I haven't heard before, unfortunately.
I, I think, I think one comment I will make is, is, I think that-
No, come on. We've heard it many, Al, you know we can hear, listen to you. I guess a point of reference, now, the document, it's not a brand-new document, it's just a condensed version, and I don't know if you want to elaborate a little bit on this, Ricky. This is, all it, it's being tweaked based on your comments, so we're not presenting to you a, excuse me. You've had enough chance to talk. Now, it's a document that keeps getting changed based on comments we hear, and we're still getting comments, and we'll keep listening to you and making this thing a document that we, we can all go forward with. Yeah, Ricky?
The, the document that we put out today was strictly a working document based on the last meeting we had. The master plan that was published prior to the last meeting is still the master plan. We have not changed one word in that plan. We took comments at the last public hearing, we boiled those comments down to this document that happens to be 80 pages, because what we said was, if we just address the comments, people won't know what we're addressing them towards. So we attached the existing zoning regulations, we attached the existing master plan verbiage, so that's why it got lengthy. We, we created a synthesized version that was nine pages, 10 pages, that basically just was what we heard, how the master plan addresses it, what our options are, what, what are the conclusions. So the document that people keep saying is this new document is basically just, it was supposed to be our workbook as we work through this process for each of these 10 items. The master plan that was issued, I believe now upwards of 45 days, hasn't changed. We haven't changed one word yet. We're still taking comments on how we're going to revise the plan.
That's a very good point, Rick, and, and I think, I think as we listen to the comments that we've had in the prior meetings and everything, you know, you know, I know that some of the folks in the audience, you know, we've spent a great deal of time meeting with on a, you know, because we've given them an opportunity to come in, into the office and meet with some of us and staff. And it, it's important that there be a two-way communication here, because, you know, we're, we're trying to write lofty goals for the parish, and, and some of them, unfortunately, are hard decisions to make. You know, the interconnecting subdivisions, yeah, I mean, I'd love to not connect my subdivision, it'd be great, love the privacy, great, no problem. I didn't have a gas leak, I had a garbage truck that got stuck trying to make a U-turn on a, on a 18-foot wide piece of pavement, and I had to drive down a pipeline across everybody's backyard to get going and go somewhere. It wasn't exactly my preference, but it happened. Was it the right thing to do? Probably not. But there's also the public safety issue. You know, the police, fire, and rescue folks, they need to be able to get to your homes and be able to protect you. And in order to do that, they may need multiple ways to get in and out of a subdivision. And I think, I think it's important that, that we always at least look at that point of it, because it'd be nice to just sit back and goes, oh, well, I don't want that. But how do we address the, the financial implications of making that decision, as well as the potential for life lost or danger? It's not an easy decision, and we're not making it light, and we're not trying to say, we don't want to hear your comments. On the contrary, we take your comments very, very seriously, and it's very important that we hear them, but it's also important that you hear us and, and ask our, and answer us to our questions. I mean, I, I started the issue talking about the public safety concern of it, not one person, you know, answered, well, yeah, it's, it's, it's an issue, and I don't have an answer, at least, at least acknowledge that much. But no, you know, what we want is what we want, you know? And there is a public safety issue. I don't care what anybody says, it's real, it's, it's very real.
Okay. All right, so.
Do you want to take a break? Is that what you guys want to do?
Yeah.
No? Let's just keep going.
Well, I'm kind of like Howard, though. I drove in from the other side of San Antonio to make this meeting, and I didn't realize that it was going to last till midnight.
I don't see any legal reason why we can't continue this to the next stated meeting on the 21st, and pick up where we leave off tonight. I mean, I'm not a lawyer, we don't have one here, but we're not saying we're not going to hear this whole thing, we're just saying we're going to continue the meeting on another day and just pick up right where we left off with all the due, all the notification necessary. I mean, we want to hear what people have to say, and this takes time. And I'm thinking two, two and a half hours at a whack is a gracious plenty for anybody to sit here and after, especially after a, a normal day.
Well, weren't, uh, weren't we talking also about some town hall meetings, Ricky, before the meeting started?
Yeah, we were sort of hoping that we would get through this process so that we would have a revised version of the plan to look at, but Brian and I were looking at four sites, the north, west, east, and south parts of the parish to go out with the plan and sit for a day, sort of 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and just, just sit. And if people want to come and talk to us, look at the map, talk about the plan, talk about concerns, questions, comments, criticisms, that's what we were going to do. Based on this meeting getting extended, we're probably going to push that back, because I don't want to meet with a half-reviewed plan. So at this point, we're going to do it, I just can't tell you when. But not until we have a revised final version of this plan that we can take-
Would you all be willing to push the envelope and keep going until 9 o'clock? Let's take stock at that time.
Oh, yeah.
And you know what? I think everybody would be helpful if we could stay on point.
Yes.
Right, kind of what I said before. Don't get off.
And I'll just acknowledge upfront that I'm a communist conspirator so we can not have any more of those comments.
I agree.
Well, Julio, I do agree with you, but you know as well as I do, the points of this master plan are, they're interlocking. It's, yes, I think everybody needs to stay on track with what the subject of the time. I understand it's difficult because they tie together, all the subjects tie together. It's kind of hard.
They're interconnecting, if you will.
Yeah.
No pun intended.
We haven't lost our sense of humor.
All right, moving right along, if I can just keep the guys under the whip. Substandard housing is the next topic, and I think we can probably, well, who knows?
No, probably not.
The issue here, we've heard, and again, it has to do with the nature of a comprehensive plan. It's a vision document. This is not about mobile homes, okay? This is, there are substandard mobile homes in the parish. There are some other kinds of substandard homes in the parish. This is not about, and the plan does not say, we're going to try and eliminate, prohibit the placement of mobile homes, or prohibit any housing type per se. This is about, emphasize the word, substandard, okay? Now, we have current ordinances that deal with this. We could eliminate this section entirely and just go with the ordinances. Because a comprehensive plan establishes the values of a community, the question is, do you want to not have a statement that says, we don't think that we should have substandard housing in our parish? Now, we've not tried to define substandard. We know that generally, we're pretty impressed with the housing throughout the parish, okay? There are some areas that are particularly, not areas, but there are individual things. So, this is just a kind of a general goal statement, a vision statement. Now, the other side of this is that it really does reflect, we try to emphasize a little bit at the very end of this section in the plan, draft plan, that really who we're trying to protect here aren't people who buy their own homes. It's people who are renting, who really don't have control over that. And to the degree that that makes any sense, fine. I just reemphasize the fact that we're talking about substandard, we're talking about some kind of an overall vision value statement about the parish, and that when you and the council decide, as you have in the past, what substandard means, all we're doing is reemphasizing that. This is not, this is not an attempt to go out and eliminate any house types.
Well, you know, the word "substandard," that covers a lot of territory for a lot of people. And again, I hate to keep harping on this free market thing. You're always going to have blighted areas, no matter what you do. You cannot legislate them out of existence. And this council certainly cannot legislate them out of existence because we don't make legislation. Most of what this council does is subject to the review of the parish council. And that's just the way it is. Yes, it would be nice if we could say we're not going to have any substandard housing, but we are. I think we're going to create more problems than not by trying to put this in the master plan because the master plan really deals with land usage and growth and such things as that. Personally, I'd like to see this whole thing struck, and we rely on our existing ordinances and the wisdom of our sanitation department, our fire department, if something's a fire trapped, the parish council. So, my humble opinion, this should just go in its entirety.
Okay, good.
I second that, too.
Well, and I had some concerns with that as well, with some of the language I was reading, especially in, was it 17-2042? One place we're talking about, the parish going after prohibitive taxes and liens on property to take care of, or helping to eliminate, substandard housing. But what may be defined as substandard housing someplace else isn't necessarily the case here. And then I really, I'm bothered by the, see, the replacement policy. The parish will aim to gradually replace existing and prevent addition of more substandard housing in the parish. That's, that's a little strong.
You don't want to replace it with more substandard housing?
I don't want to necessarily replace it with substandard housing, but it's, it can be read a number of different ways, too. Growing up, I knew a number of people that by definition or standard of today, we would have said they live in substandard housing. They didn't live in substandard housing. They were very comfortable. Those houses were good and strong and survived hurricanes and floods and everything else. And I hate to say it, but in fact, they're built better than some of the houses we've got today. So, they didn't pay them as much, or they let them, you know, there were other things they were concerned with. When you get into substandard housing, I think that can become a very touchy...
And I'm afraid of getting way too subjective, too, you know?
But like you said, I mean, it has to address it, so I don't think you can just defer to the, just make a quick little paragraph. Okay? All right? Any other questions, comments? Okay. Members of the audience, anybody want to say some stuff?
My name is Kristi Unquant. Actually, prior to hearing Mr. Winston speak, my opening statement was, throughout the course of the master plan meetings, there has yet to be any clear definition of substandard housing. However, it's evident in Section 17-2043, under Section 3B, you state in your terminology that mobile homes are classified as substandard housing because you state, using the term, departing residents of substandard mobile home units. And you proceed to go forth and to talk about how they fall under a certain category, and you use that term, and you include mobile homes, substandard mobile home units. That is the term that is in the plan. Who determines what substandard really is? Are we, as citizens of this parish, supposed to just trust the government to decide what substandard is? Especially when the plan seems to have, exhibits more concern for the big government than concern for the citizens? You state in the master plan that the parish will aim to gradually replace substandard housing, as well as prevent the addition of more within the parish, just as Mr. Marshawn pointed out. You also talk about imposing prohibitive taxes and liens to go against property that you deem substandard, including, my definition would be mobile homes included in that. The parish should not be in the business of declaring people's homes to be substandard and target tax people out of their homes. This is a violation of our basic American rights, the standard of personal property rights, and the standard that the people of Louisiana believe in, as well as the type of system that Ascension Parish has grown under. We do not at all want to target people living in mobile homes or older homes so that the type of affordable housing can be destroyed and be replaced with apartment complexes and attached housing. The people who put this document together obviously and clearly have animosity toward mobile homes. We have no trust in the government. We have no trust in the government for people, for the people, or the people who wrote this document, to objectively decide what is substandard. There's going to be, they're going to obviously be accommodating to apartment complexes and urban-type housing. Through this plan, Ascension Parish citizens will be penalized and attacked for their individual choice of living because there will be prohibitive taxes, liens, and the possibilities of being fined. So, in summary, we live like the government wants, and we, the citizens, will be fined. But if we live in a dwelling that we would like, we need to be prepared for attacks and to constantly have to look over our shoulder. Also, the guidelines for these substandard housings have yet to be defined or stated. There's a very gray area, just as in family partitions. Mr. Winston just stated, we can define what it is after, when, after this is passed and the damage has been done, then we're going to all of a sudden, you know, define what is substandard? Let's just, let's just go ahead and state it now, put it up front, be out there. There is very gray areas, just as there is in family partitions. Although it's evident that this doc, in this document, there is an attack on mobile homes, Mr. Winston, we all know how you feel, basically, the last meeting, you quoted, I quoted you saying that both mobile homes are good when you're barely scraping by. I'm sure you remember that.
Three minutes are up. Okay. I think we got the point. Thank you.
And may I just say, I've regretted that statement ever since, so, thank you.
Thank you, Catherine Guppel. I just want to read a few parts of the document, and for those who haven't seen it and want to look at it, it's at 17-2042, pages, starts there, 63 to 66. And I commented on this the last time, but I didn't get a chance to say much about it because we had a lot to talk about. It says, the thing that troubles me about this section of the document is that we are greatly increasing the arm of government into individuals' lives. Okay? Let me just read a little bit here. The government will phase out existing and prevent addition of more substandard housing in the parish. This is how they'll do it. They'll identify and inventory existing substandard housing units by lot and parcel. That's a big job. They're going to have to create a department, staff it, and fund it. This will include establishing an inspection and rating system that sets a minimum acceptable standard for both rental and owner-occupied units. All property owners in Ascension Parish who have rental property, they live in them, pay attention. A prohibitive tax and other liens can be established, that was mentioned, if anything is found substandard. In an earlier document, we don't have it at this meeting, but it was suggested that every year, your rental property would be inspected, it would cost you $50 to have this done. If, two years in succession, you met the standards, then the third year, you wouldn't have to have the inspection done. It's like a money grab. This is not right. This is another point that bothers me, on page 65. The parish can also consider the purchase of properties, the parish shouldn't be in the business of buying land, this is what they're buying it for, for sale at below-market rates, then they can take these properties and offer them to developers willing to develop a portion of affordable units. That's not what Ascension Parish is about. That's not what our government needs to be doing. It says also that the government will seek grants and special financing for first-time home buyers, and one of these that will qualify is a substandard mobile home that is removed from the inventory. They'll all, the government will also consider tax incentives for businesses who will employ workers with certain levels of income, who will actually, the business owners will offer down payment to assist these first-time buyers. And the other thing they will do is actually give them time off to go and take a course on how to buy a home. I don't think that's what government should be about. Thank you.
No other comments? Yes?
I'll come back to where I left off for a moment.
All right.
So, what...
We're still talking about, I mean, we're not talking about rural, we're talking about just one topic. Stay on topic.
No, no. This deals with building homes, dividing the lots.
And that's not what we're talking about.
Let me explain what we're talking, we're talking about if the area, in other words, the homes, the lot, doesn't meet the same criteria as the homes that are built in that area now, new homes. This particular plan came before Parish Planning Commission, it was turned down.
I'm still not sure I understand your point on how it's on topic. I really...
You don't understand how it's on the topic?
Talking about substandard housing, not new homes, not subdividing lots, construction. Okay?
I'll wait on another time and be right back.
There'll be plenty of good opportunities.
My name is Reagan Smith. I'm a resident of Prairieville. I want to talk about the hostility to existing affordable housing in Ascension. Older homes, or maybe just trailer homes, are to be inventoried to see which one should receive the dreaded substandard designation. If, under the audit, your home is declared substandard, then prohibitive tax and other liens can be established on all residential units that are found substandard. The document calls for, quote, "phasing out existing and prevent, to prevent additional of more substandard housings," end of quote. The document specifically calls for the transition of the, of those mobile homes or other dwelling types. This is aggression against existing Ascension Parish and the determination to convert Ascension Parish to high-density urban zone. Affordable housing should not work within existing density protections, and existing affordable housing should not be bitterly attacked. Although it's evident that in this document, there is an act on mobile homes as existing affordable housings, but in the same document, you also talk about all the incentives, incentives that will be applied for high-density types of urban housings, such as extra money and assistance for people who transition from a mobile home into your type of definition of affordable means of living. Citizens are awarded to leave from mobile home living and transition to the government ideal type of living. You offer all type of assistance and substantiations to get people into apartment complexes and high-density urban-type housing. According to your statistics, 69% of our parish owns one acre or less, 69%. Mobile homes are a good and affordable means of living for people to not only get started in, but to live in. Your plan wants to shove those folks into communal living, whereas existing affordable living allows people to have yards for their kids to play in and for privacy. Your way has people living wall-to-wall, ceiling-to-ceiling, with kids having a parking lot for a yard, or traveling possibly a few blocks away to play on a community playground, or at a park where parents cannot keep their eye on them. What mother wants her children to travel any distance, even two blocks, to be able to enjoy an area to play in out of her sight, where she cannot regularly monitor them or their environment unless present? Versus playing in the safety of their own backyard where the parents have control and are able to monitor the influence of the company that their children are around. Affordable housing, which includes mobile homes, should not be attacked. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's such a huge contrast here, just shown in the document. There's certain types of affordable housing that are deeply supported by the authors of this document, and then there's other types of affordable housing that are the enemy type of housing. And this document, you can see it so clearly when you contrast what's considered substandard, where we're going to have an inventorying of all the homes in the parish. The government's got to come in and inventory your home, and if you get the dreaded substandard classification, then it says in the document that we're going to look at prohibitive taxes and liens on your property, and there's other enforcement measures in there against so-called substandard housing. My grandmother lived in an old southern house till she died. She would have been scared to death if government people were going to come into her house, and if they give her a substandard rating, then... if they give her a substandard rating, then she's gonna have to lose her house. That would be very frightening. It is totally opposed to American private property beliefs. So we have this aggression in, in the document for mobile homes and old homes, whereas, when it comes to apartment complexes, it's all types of subsidies and protections and, you've got emphasized, you've got subsidies, incentives, allocating sales taxes for apartment complexes, high-dense areas, establishing new property taxes for high-density areas, prioritizing infrastructure for high-density areas. So all that for apartment complexes, where all this positive and support comes in, but then when it comes to existing older homes and trailers, we're gonna say, "That type of affordable housing is unacceptable, and we're gonna be violating American principles to get rid of it."
Okay. All right. Y'all did hear what Mr. Dalton said, opening before we even got into this. I mean, I just wanna make clear what he said, and everybody up here pretty much agreed with his recommendation. So I think we're kinda going over something that's really a moot point, but, Mr. Penderby.
How you doing?
Good to see you.
Thank you for letting me be here. I can sympathize with Mr. Howard about wanting to cancel this meeting, but, you know, if you go to the doctrine, you got a penitentis, you better not, you better not hope he wants to go home in two hours, I'm gonna wait on you tomorrow. This is a penitentis to a lot of people. I know some of you on this board, and I look at most of you up yonder, and I'd more likely make a conservative estimate, take the whole board up there, and you're more likely don't own fifty acres together.
I resent that remark.
Well, I mean, I'm seeing what I say.
You're off-subject.
No, sir. This is my subject and I'm talking about.
We're talking about something...
Substandard housing.
I see most of the people...
That's all we wanna talk about.
I see most of the people aren't even from here, from here. We've about regulated ourself out of business between the federal government and now the local government. I was raised in an old substandard house that would've been considered substandard, but it was a clean house. I'd rather have a clean old house than a new dirty house any day of the week. We're, we're making it to where our young people aren't gonna live in this parish, can't afford to live in this parish. You know, in a couple of years, you're gonna have to have sprinkler systems in houses. If you got an old house with lead paint, you gotta completely strip it out now. What you do, you gut it out. You can't get all the paint out of it. You know, what we, what we got here is, is we got some sheepherders telling cattlemen what to do. Until it affects you, how can you sit back there and rule on somebody else?
Okay. Are we moving on to another one? One more? Mr. Dalton, you good for one more topic?
Hey. I like this one too, so let's go for it.
Howard, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
You, your recommendation, the, we started out with, you were recommending, was it seventeen dash forty, or twenty forty-two, that we're talking about getting rid of?
The halls. In fact, I'll make it in front of a motion.
Well, I, I was gonna ask you if, besides doing that, if we could knock out forty-three and forty-four, since everybody's, you know, the comments have touched on all three of these sections. Just take them all, 'cause we started, we started with forty-two, and some of the comments have, have gone on to section forty, twenty forty-three and twenty forty-four, so, I'd just like to eliminate all three of them.
I'm trying to find it.
Instead of just the...
I'm trying to find it, and I'm looking, I just absolutely can't find it.
It's in the document. Got you, okay. It's in the document.
There's nothing like having a good index to help you. Thank you. Yeah. Absolutely. Fortunately, we can't find out who authored that and stand them against the wall, but I feel pretty strongly about that. I don't wanna see all those...
You know, this, what you, you know, we started was actually with forty-two, but I mean the...
Yeah, absolutely.
We've hit forty-three and forty-four as well, so, just like, you know, we might as well go ahead and take all three of them out and be done with it.
Yeah, and I, it's if they all kinda go into the same topic. I don't know that we need to hear public comment on something that we're gonna probably do away with anyway. Would mine change?
Motion now or later?
No, later. No, we don't want it now.
Yeah, that needs to go away.
Well, it's not here, here to do that right now, but...
That needs to go away, for sure.
It's duly noted.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments? Anybody wanna? Go ahead. Mr. Winston, if you wanna just talk about them briefly, just so we can kinda...
Which one?
Capture all of them. I guess we're, the, the topics, and I guess maybe, kinda, do we skip over one or...
I don't, I don't think we skipped over one.
Number six, it should be urbanizing centers, number six.
Right. We just eliminated number seven. We, we took this one. This is the one that we...
Right, right. Yeah, that took seven out. We haven't done urbanizing centers yet.
So we're next to urbanizing centers.
I thought, I was kinda thinking it was this, that, or this. So it's six and seven, did you?
No.
Five and seven.
You just eliminated five and seven.
Five and seven.
Five and seven.
Here we have it.
Number six.
How about six?
Kinda go, just summarize that, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Move, move into what we just did and kinda why we did it, and so we just loop right along. Okay?
So, we're limiting item number five and number seven from the agenda and, that are on the agenda, and, and those sections in the plan, and, let's talk about, I guess the, well, let's talk about urbanizing centers, page thirty-five of your today's handout. And, there are a number of considerations that brought about this, one of which was the fact that we are an urbanizing parish already. We have, in several areas of the parish, fairly urbanizing conditions. We have, this is related to commuting patterns, it's related to lifestyle choices, we, it's related to, not everybody wants or can afford to live on a third-acre or half-acre lot, and that we are losing a significant amount of our, we are losing some amount of our sales tax dollars to our neighboring parish because of, of lack of commercial. As, as the parish population grows, as it's projected to grow, and as it has the capacity to grow regardless of what density, the parish can double in population, even at half-acre So part of this notion of centers has to do with, frankly, the existing master plan, the existing zoning plan. You've adopted a notion that says, "We don't want strip commercial lining all of our highways and major roadways," that we wanna begin to concentrate commercial into, into, into more discreet areas. It has to do with the fact that, or with the observation that we have, we need to find ways of getting people closer to where they work, those that want to be in that lifestyle. We have identified the fact that there are people who would love to live in, in smaller places, who would love to rent places in the parish, who would love to have different opportunities than just half-acre lots. So, we need people to work in our stores, we need places for firemen, we need places for our, our sales clerks, et cetera. So the notion evolved here is that we would have, involved, that there would be centers. Now, this also came out of the input by all the people that participated in the public process, and, and there were a number of people, and surprisingly consistent reactions by those that participated and came back and viewed the evolution of those ideas to try and capture what they told us in the yearly exercises. So we have identified a couple, one larger center up in the Prairieville area, and, and then there are a number of smaller centers, and then some, some convenience centers that sort of like Two Rose Grocery and others that are around, that have a grocery store, a convenience, and maybe a little subdivision or a little housing nearby, walkable, might be the place where, there are a number of intersections throughout the parish where there are schools, commercial, all evolving. These intersections are busy enough that they're not ideal locations for, for low-density subdivisions, but they can be made into livable little communities. And, and, and so that's the, that's the idea, that's the image that, that was conveyed to us. We've identified previously that these are not large areas, these are not intended to be major developments out in the rural parts of the parish, but rather in areas that are already close to major highways, close to major, close to interchanges, and close to intersections. And so they are meant to be small. We've identified, and, and it was not clear in the earlier documents, people called us to task about the fact that these sounded like they were gonna be huge developments, and we've clarified that these are, the largest is maybe two hundred acres, and the others are probably in the, in the fives to twenty, to thirty-five acre sort of sizes, in terms of the smaller centers, and scattered around where they provide a convenience service to those living in those areas. Part of the challenge we face in the parish with the, with congestion on our roads is a number of people that are commuting not only in and out of the parish, but around the parish to, to access, and many of them for, for convenience kinds of items. Again, we're talking about the parish twenty years from now. We're talking about a parish that's, that's potentially significantly increased in population, and as we approach that critical mass, can we have places where we will have commercial? Everybody seems to, I mean, we need commercial. We need commercial for the sales tax that provides the quality of life that everybody in the room enjoys today. And so, as we begin to grow, we're gonna develop a critical mass of rooftops. That will attract stores. Where do we put the stores? Where do we put the businesses? Where do we put the employment that'll come with that, that'll service all of that? And the idea is, do we scatter them throughout the parish as, as would happen today, and every one of those is a, is a kind of a, of a pitched, is a problem in terms of where, would they land, or do we in fact create some sort of a system, and I, where centers can happen and feather down and begin to blend gradually and, with the surrounding land uses, and not create these, nor do we line all of our streets with strip commercial? So that's essentially the content.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Well, yeah, we currently have certain types of zoning in place, crossroads, commercial, mixed use, and things of that nature, that are predominantly centered around intersections, crossroads, literally.
Correct.
People have purchased this land based on what they perceive to be a certain commercial value at that point in time. I certainly hope you're not advocating that we're gonna go back and rezone what's currently zoned. I agree with you, that it'd be nice in a very planned community or planned parish type of way, if we could've said, "Okay, we're gonna distribute these things around so people don't have to drive across the parish to shop for groceries or to work or what have you." But that's not where we are in fact today. The die is cast, to a large degree. Though I appreciate the concept of what you're suggesting, I'm gonna go right out and just tell you, I think this is absolutely Pandora's Box because of the existing zoning we have in place along our major throughfares and whatnot. We just underwent a major rezoning for the entire parish, and certainly that's not a viable thing to attempt to do again. So I don't see how this is gonna fit in with our current zoning in the parish. Maybe you could clear that up for me?
Actually, it reinforces it. It's, it's really reflecting what's already been done.
Well, the reason I said that is I looked at the draft preferred scenario for March twenty-ninth, twenty-ten, and these small towns, village and hamlets, and I understand that concept, to my mind, don't overlay on any of the zoning maps that I've seen very well, or did I miss it?
Well, a number of them do, actually.
Okay.
And there are a couple of others that don't exist on the current zoning maps, but the current zoning map really kind of follows.
Well, it would be helpful if these were presented over the current zoning map. That would eliminate some concerns. I mean, if it's on top of current commercial zoning and that kind of thing, that's all well and good. If it's not, we need to know that too.
Yeah.
So I'm suggesting perhaps this be redone on a scale that would show the current zoning and where these areas are loosely suggested.
Okay. And don't forget, we're talking about twice as many people in the parish as we have today, so we need significant more accommodations for those people, or we're just gonna not be able to drive around the parish, because they're gonna be clogging the roads together. Or they'll stop coming, and maybe that's the answer.
Okay. Mike, did you have something?
Well, my concern is that we end up with a situation like we've got right now with crossroad commercial, and what we did is, if you stand in the center of an intersection and you look out six-hundred-and-sixty feet in all four directions, you, there's crossroad commercial. But property owner down here to the, to the west of me wants to go ahead and get his property rezoned, crossroad commercial. And then another adjacent property owner, it gets rezoned, another adjacent property owner, and you kinda get lopsided. So I, I just, I've always had a concern with ending up a mile and a half or two miles down from an intersection, and we've still got crossroad commercial because that's what my neighbors got in that kind of way, too. And I understand that. That's, that's the right of any property owner to come and, and make that request. So I, I still have that same concern, even with, you know, at what point, when does a hamlet become a village? But it's a lopsided village.
Good point. That's a, that's a great question. The, the challenge is that, you're right, we're dealing with something that takes place over time, and it's not gonna be a neat little progression of, everybody, you're gonna do yours, and you're gonna do yours, and it's all gonna fit in together, and you're at exactly the crossroads. People have different timing, different sense of what they wanna do with their property, all of that. So, two things. One is that the, the plan is, the reason those are asterisks is that they're general in nature. We've looked at every one of those asterisks and said, "In that general vicinity, there are multiple, often multiple places that general little agglomeration or center can happen." Okay? And so, the other thing is, nobody's forcing it to happen. If the market isn't there, the person who owns the property isn't forced to do it. It just says, "If you wanna do it." Here's an asterisk that says, "This, we, this is a policy that we're gonna support this concept if the market is there. If the market isn't there, we're not gonna go into it. We're not gonna force anybody to do it, and if they wanna come in and propose something different than that, then that's a decision for the board that's in charge of zoning at the time." And those asterisks can move a certain distance, so, but at some point, there would be a general guideline that says, "No, you know, you're halfway away from the intersection, that's not a crossroads commercial anymore. That's not an intersection, it's not convenient, it's just gonna generate more traffic than it solves." So there would be some general sense about giving you some tools to evaluate these various proposals that would come down the pipe, but, but it generally, it's perceived as more of an opportunity. I mean... I mean, as a developer, I would be looking for, look, if the parish is willing to send a signal that something like that on a fairly modest scale is possible, I might take a run at that. If I don't, if the parish has not designated that, then I'm probably going to be much less likely to try and propose something because I know that it's a challenge to get anything proposed, accepted in anywhere, not just in Ascension Parish, but in general. So it's, it's generally a, an idea. There are probably more than designated than will actually happen. And over time, there could be slight variations in where they happen. That'll be according to criteria that you would have to evaluate.
Ricky, when we just did that rezoning at 431 in Cannon, do I remember you saying something about that was an area that you had, y'all had identified as possibly being a hamlet?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I thought I did. So some of that is rezoned, Howard. And then I think like Mr. Winston said, some of this happens on its own. You look at Harvest Supermarket in the Ralphs out by Pelican Point. There was a need and somebody filled that need. So they, they are going to come, you know, when people, when people have the need, they will, they will come. And we do have a lot of areas on the zoning, the new zoning map, that have those marked.
And this is just, I'm to try and think ahead about, okay, given a choice, where would I prefer to see it happen? And we know that the reality is when somebody walks in and has a proposal, it may not fit exactly according to the plan. And you're going to have to make a value judgment as to how far away and the property may not be available, the people who own the property may not want for that purpose, et cetera. But in general, people are looking for some kind of a signal that says, hey, this is, if that's, if that's an idea that's in the comprehensive plan, I might take a run at it.
Crossroads commercial also allows some pretty dense zoning already. I don't know what it is offhand, but it's already there.
I don't know offhand either.
I don't have my charts on.
Okay. Nothing else? Okay, we'll open up public comment. Yes, sir?
I was not involved in the early meetings. I was asleep. But I get my information secondhand, but it does seem like the, the goal to accommodate 100,000 more people is a little arbitrary. I know the parish is growing, maybe the 100,000 is a good number. But the, the way in which the conclusion was made in those early meetings, I think was managed by the constraints on the density options. And I, I think people, you know, scurrying around trying to accommodate the 100,000 realize they had to use some high-density numbers. Look, I, I think, you know, the concept of, of mixed commercial and residential, it sounds pretty good. You know, you think about these idealized places where people live near where they work. That's great, except they're going to have to move every three years. People change jobs so frequently, it might work for a short period of time, but it's not going to work for long. We do have these plans in place. We do have existing zoning that would allow these things to happen as they need to happen, as there's demand. But I fear suddenly seeing one of these planned urban developments appearing right next to my place. And, you know, I'm selfish. Again, I'm independent and I'm private and I don't want to see that. I think the existing plan would work. I like the idea of, you know, if, if, if the demand is there, it'll happen in these existing, already zoned places. Why propose what I think is a fairly radical idea to urbanize pockets around the parish? If we need to see a failure of this, let's look to Perkins Road. It's a disaster. Thank you.
I'm sorry, you didn't state your name. Was it Mr. Peterson?
John Peterson.
Peterson, okay. Thank you.
Come on, we, let's try and get done with this.
Okay, I'm going to be quick. This plan does address 10 years, 20 years from now. Recent research I read says that we're at our peak here in Ascension Parish, five years after Katrina, with the population that has moved in this area. We don't expect there to be 100,000 more people to move in this area. And that's what we're planning for. We're not planning five years from now, 10 years from now is what we're planning for. Let's look at these projections. Let's look at them five years from now. Let's go best case, worst case scenario. Did want to show you pictures that I have of, again, of those, the hamlets. It's very little, but you'll see that there are hamlets. And the big village in Prairieville, there's a hamlet here, there's another hamlet here, there's hamlets at 70. There's these little villages and places all along Airline Highway. They get out in these areas. They're on Stringer Bridge Road. They're out in the Santa Ma area. So please look at these places that they're, they're suggesting for hamlets. This one here, this is, this is my area. Again, you have hamlets, this is all of our area here. 621, you have a hamlet right at Airline Highway or whatever these are called, villages. You have another one here at 74 and Airline Highway. You have one here at 621 and Roddy Road. You have them out here at Highway 431. You have three of them, Gold Place Road, Stringer Bridge Road. So folks, look at what they're proposing here for urbanization.
I understand. You say they're proposing. This was done by input from the public. And this is, numerous meetings were, were held for people to, like yourself, to come to the meeting, participate in this process.
I saw 36 people show up at meetings. That, that was the poll. The poll was on 36 people.
That's not, we can't control who shows up and who doesn't. I mean, that's.
I think a better job needs to be done of outreach. I guarantee you, if you do it in Dutch Town, Duplessis area, you will have a pile of people that will come up and show up out there. We are asking you to have meetings in our communities. There's lots of communities, okay? I want to show you all the communities we have here. Prairieville has a different community. They're closer to Baton Rouge. Galvez has a different community. They're along the river. Same thing for Santa Ma. These are communities. They're not just council districts. Listen to the people. I mean, y'all have not done enough outreach to get the people's input on this. And I'm speaking from 10 years ago when I worked for the parish and we did this with the parish folks. We didn't hire a contractor. Our Planning and Development Department and the folks with the parish went out and did these community meetings at many places, 11 different locations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
I just want to quickly say, I want to thank many of the members and I want to thank Ricky and Brian for having the open door policy. I encourage a lot of people to go see them. They, they are more than willing to and I think they would present a great opportunity. I don't think enough people do. We have 100,000 people in this parish. We may have like 30 or 40 people here. That's, that's really sad. It really is. I wish more people would get involved in the business community as well as concerned citizens. Please do that. I really encourage you to. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Again, my name is Reagan Smith. When's the last, when's the last time you heard an Ascension resident say that we need to be more urban? And when's the last time you heard an urban social statistic and said, it's so sad that Ascension wasn't more like that? Are we looking for urban school performance statistics, urban crime statistics, urban traffic statistics, urban street behavior? Well, we know we have succeeded when we have urban flash mobs. People are running from urban areas across the nation. The last 40 years of American social history has a subplot of Americans getting out of urban centers for something better. And with urban getting worse and worse, should we be shooting for Detroit-type urban, New Orleans-type urban, Baton Rouge-type urban? Ascension is a refuge from urban jungles and it seems that some national establishment powers don't like that. This document is intended to destroy the present Ascension Parish as a semi-rural suburban parish and to force urbanize us and to force us to subsidize our conversion to urban horror. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, I think urban is, is the, is the heart of this document. This document is about urbanizing Ascension Parish. They're going to urbanize the north of the parish and they're going to hold the land in south of parish where they can't develop it until the north of the parish is urbanized and then they'll start taking sections of the south of the parish and urbanizing those. The Comprehensive Urbanizing Plan, first released in April 2010, is a plan to destroy Ascension Parish as a semi-rural suburban community and convert Ascension to an urban area. It is a vision of the future that Ascension residents do not want. The writers of the Urbanizing Plan are obviously zealous for high-density urban zones. Their document goes page after page with how the parish government will subsidize, emphasize, incentivize, reallocate sales taxes, establish new property taxes, and prioritize infrastructure expenditures for high-density urban zones. And what are these high-density urban zones we need to sacrifice and encourage and underwrite? Well, first, they can go 15 units per acre. Ascension is presently 3, 2, and 1 to an acre. Their plan designates 10 units per acre as medium intensity. All of the density protections of Ascension Parish are to be eliminated and in their place, we are to have subsidized intense-density zones. And even, and they even say with a straight face that this will help road traffic. Their centers of high-density, designed to be urban, pockmarked Ascension Parish on their map. The document tells us we are to, quote, "accommodate urban growth, the demand for urban growth patterns with urban growth areas, urban infill, and concentrated urban centers," close quote. They have 17 major new high-density centers on their must-follow land use map. Prairieville ominously and fearfully is noted as a general, quote, "general opportunity area to serve as a regional role," close quote, "as an urban center." Airline Highway and Highway 30 are designated as high-density mixed-use corridors. Urban growth, urban expansion, and urban annexation are to be promoted in and outside of Gonzalez, Donaldsonville, and Sorento. Even in their designation of suburban, we are to have attached housing and pockets of compact mixed-use centers and a super-crammed average density of four units per acre, which basically enables limitless apartments in suburban areas when one considers that the present lots, roads, ditches, and ponds will be included in the calculation of average density. There's basically no limitation on crammed housing in this document outside, if you're inside the urbanizing zone, which is designated by the septic system. There's, there's no limitations. They can put apartments anywhere by this document.
Three minutes are up. All right. Thank you.
We've all experienced huge growing pains over recent years. Do you really believe that Ascension Parish residents want parish government to encourage more compact growth in centers with duplexes, condominiums, apartments, townhomes, and oh yes, some single-family dwellings mixed in? It is ironic that this plan is called, quote, "smart growth" when the present population here has already outgrown the infrastructure. We live daily with substandard roads, inadequate fire protection, and no central sewage system, sewer system. As Mr. Dalton said earlier in the, in the meeting, the horse has left the barn. In District 2, where I live, and District 3, which is adjacent on both sides of the river, the Ascension Parish Council passed an ordinance last June, creating a PUD overlay district, rezoning parcels of land to applicable zoning categories. These districts still have the rural character you're trying to preserve. The ordinance mandates large areas in our district zone conservation, one dwelling per acre to change future development of these properties to the highest density, eight to 10 dwellings per acre, when three acres is involved. These changes occurred without our knowledge, despite the facade of public meetings that we did attend. I have yet to find anyone in our community that knew about it, although we are, we are the actual owners of the property affected. Urbanization is being forced on our community through this. Just want to show, and y'all have already touched on it, so I just want to briefly just remind you, the small town may reach 15 units per acre, the village, eight to 10 units per acre, the hamlet, four to eight units per acre. These are things citizens, or a lot of Ascension Parish citizens are concerned about. Medium residential in the sewage, in the sewer system, and you had brought up something here, is only located in areas served by a regional sewer system. This can reach up to eight to 10 dwellings per acre. Your map right here that you had in here, the zoning, medium density, which is medium density today, which is three dwellings per acre, it can go eight to 10 here in this. We have to be careful. You can create, there can be an area in the parish that maybe there's some homes spread out right now, but if they burn down or if something happens and the family closes or wants to build a better one, they can turn around and increase the density in those areas where you think you're safe now. Again, throughout, and I'm just going to quote a couple of them, a key component of the future land use plan is to encourage varieties of housing types, especially in areas of compact development. Ascension Parish encourages new residential types in centers and areas supporting more compact dwelling. This is throughout. And we just don't feel like it is your, your job to necessarily encourage this compact development. As the gentleman said like that right up there earlier, is that the market shall and will drive it if the need is there. I'd like to just close with this one statement that you have in here and the principles and the key concepts under sustainable growth patterns. Growth should occur where it avoids threats to health and safety, where it can be supported with adequate infrastructure, and where it does not result in negative impacts on existing roadways. Our District 44 is ridiculous. So we're really putting the cart before the horse here. Appreciate y'all's help.
Okay.
I'm a member of the Strategic Planning Committee. I've been to every meeting, every public hearing since things started from inception. I want to thank you all for opening this tonight for public comment when it was advertised as not being a public comment, period. Thank you all for doing that. I think what we need to see and what you, ladies and gentlemen, need to do is after the final master plan is finally completed, I think you have to, need to have numerous public hearings on this because there's a lot of items that are on this agenda that, there's a lot of items that are not on this agenda that need to be discussed also. And I think you need a lot of public comment from, from numerous people on this. And this has not been, like Ricky said, and I'm going to quote Ricky, this plan has only been a draft plan for 25 days. So people have not seen it. And again, this meeting was not open to public comment. It was not announced as a public comment meeting. So you need to have public comment periods and announce public comment periods so everyone will have a chance to come speak for the portions they approve or disapprove of. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. I want to thank each one of you for the time that you've come tonight to listen and to talk. And we've listened to you too. I do want to thank the councilmen, Todd Lambert and Benny Johnson and George Valentine that took time out of their busy schedules to come and listen and give their comments. One of the things that we mentioned at the last meeting, I want to reiterate, we have a master plan now. It is in place. We have zoning, but it's not being enforced. It's not being followed either by our elected officials or the Planning and Zoning Commission at times. I do want the people to know that it is not necessary to do an entire new plan. We can take what we have and we can make it work. This particular plan that we have in our hands does not need to be tweaked. It needs a major upgrade. If we are going to work on this plan, it is going to take months for us to get it where it will be acceptable to the people of Ascension Parish. Then when we go to the council, the council's going to have to face the people and it's not going to be pretty. One of the things that we have really failed is the number-one guiding principle in our present plan, and you mentioned it in this plan. And that is, if there is not adequate infrastructure in place, we will not allow development. And we have not followed that principle. You have not followed that principle. We need to be working on a sewer plant. I spoke with the parish president about that recently. They have a plan. They've not adopted it. They know they're out of compliance. 100% of every sewer treatment plant is out of compliance and no one is, is doing anything about it. We need to do something. We need to stop talking. We need to adopt the plan, implement. We need to adopt the plan, implement the plan. I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Hey, you want any closing comments?
I know that we're all tired, but I know that you sense some animosity from several of us that speak. It's kind of like the mama bear with her cub. This is our home, this is our community. It's something that throughout the generations in this parish, people have passed on, their property, their heritage, their culture. We're fighting to maintain that. We are not against you, we are against the plan. It is the plan we want to toss, would be really my most favored object that I desire and wish would happen. I think that is, I appreciate Mr. Dalton, what you said about the current zoning, to compare what we have currently with what this is establishing. Thank you. I think you're listening, and Mr. Michael, also some of the comments you made, I appreciate those. We're comfortable with our present zoning. You know, we weren't at first, because we had to fight to get that. But years, and time pass, and we're comfortable with that. I think that urbanization definitely takes us in a completely different direction that we're not comfortable with. You can't help, they all interconnect. It's that, yes, it affects our character, it affects the rural thing, they all intermingle. And so I urge you to really relook at this. We have present commercial zoning. I'm not against the new businesses coming, setting up those areas for that. I'm against mixing them with high density. That's the problem with the urban plan, is the high density. One thing that I see lacking in this plan is the care for the present businesses we have. Nothing's mentioned. There's things such as, okay, well, if they'll give money to those people, then they get tax incentives for those that are going to get a house. And I know y'all have taken some things out, and thank you. I appreciate that, and I know that there are others that really appreciate that. But I don't see any incentive for those that have built this community, built this parish, have long, hard work of hours put in it to make it work, to provide for their family, to provide for the area. We have a community of businesses, commercial in Gonzalez and Prairieville. I know that there's been some concern of needing more things. But I shop here, I live here, I, you know, eat out at restaurants here, I buy cars here. Every one I've ever bought, I've bought here. And so we have things that were provided for. I really believe in pulling back into my community. I'm not from here originally, I'm Mississippi Regneck, I'm proud of it, but this area is home to me. And when I moved, I moved to Baton Rouge, I stayed there for a couple of years, and I said, I got to get out this way, because this was more representation of our area. So we're going to maintain it. Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Any closing comments?
You have a motion to continue?
Yeah, any parting comments?
I did, I received an email from a resident who was not able to attend due to family obligations, and he asked me if I would read his statement to the commission, and if it could be entered into the public minutes. This is from Mr. Lane Staut. He says, "I'll be as straightforward as possible. I urge the Ascension Parish Planning Commission to seriously consider adopting one of the two recommendations below regarding this master plan revision, in lieu of taking any other action. Number one, scrap the proposed plan in its entirety, and start over with an open input from citizens, business, and landowners of this parish, and others with a vested interest in our community. Afford an open slate for all ideas to be considered, conduct all meetings in public, and provide ample notice of all such gatherings. The planning commission should be the entity to conduct these sessions, not consultants. Number two, should the current form of the proposed master plan or some semblance of it continue to be promoted, adopt a binding resolution that the passage into law of such shall be by a referendum of the voters of the parish. After all, if this revision is truly being done in the best interest of the people, for the well-being of the people, with the people's tax money, then the people should have the last say. Signed, Lane Staut, Gonzalez, Louisiana."
Anybody else? And I guess probably need a motion to reconvene.
Motion to reconvene, to continue this public hearing, excuse me, this workshop on June 21, 2010.
Second.
A motion to reconvene on June 21, take up the rest of the agenda, seconded by...
Howard.
Howard, okay. Thank you. I'll do the track away. Any objections? Okay, motion carries, and we are adjourned.